Welcome everyone to the regular board meeting of the Azusa Unified School District. Today is May 15, 2018, 6:31. Can we please stand for the flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to roll call, Vice President Shilin Cruz Gonzalez.
Here.
Clerk Paul Nakashian.
Present.
Board Member Yolanda Rodriguez Peña.
Present.
Board Member Jerry Bibles Vogel.
Here.
Myself Helen Haramio, we are all present tonight. We are moving on to approval of the agenda. We do have two amendments, including 6.6, the recognition of the Gladstone High School Boys varsity swim team, and also in the consent calendar, under item 12.6, we are adding the consideration recommendation for the employment of John H., excuse me, Blinkenstaff. This is for the interim middle school principal over at Standard Middle School. And this would be effective 5/16/18. With those amendments, do we have, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Paul Nakashian, we have a second by Yolanda Rodriguez Peña. Please place your votes. Motion passes, 5-0. At this point, we will break briefly. We'll be coming back at 7:00 PM. We have a special reception in the gazebo for our Manager of the Year, so please, let's go outside, let's celebrate, let's be together. This is a very important night, so let's do that. Okay? Coming back at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
And you're all welcome to join us. There'll be food and drinks over there.
Yes. Thank you. Once again, it is May 15, 2018. It is approximately 7:02 PM. Today is a very special night where we are able to stop and recognize some incredible work that's being done in our district by our students, our staff, our community members. So we're really happy to be here tonight. So round of applause for everybody once again that's being recognized tonight. Awesome. That brings us to 6.0. We're on 6.1, and this is the presentation for the Manager of the Year and the nominees for 2018, 2017-18 year. So please, Linda, Dr. Kaminsky.
Good evening, Madam President and Board Members. And this is a nice celebration for the end of the year. Each year, we honor our classified employees, our certificated employees, and the administrators too. And we have a number of outstanding administrators who are going to be recognized tonight. And doing the honors will be the Cabinet Members. So let me start with, let's see here, Mark Bomarito, are you?
I'm ready. I can do Darren first?
Yes, start with Darren.
All right, so.
Will you stand, Mark?
Sure.
Thank you.
You want me to stand?
Sure, please. Thank you.
So tonight, I get to tell you about our local superhero, which is Darren Howard, who is our M.I., I'm sorry, MOT Director. Darren, oh, there he is. So I said he's a local superhero because you can find him anywhere there's a need across the district, whether that's stepping in to drive a school bus as needed in an emergency, whether that's to catch a skunk that's gone under a building, as Victoria knows. He's always available. He's always at our beck and call. He doesn't know something, though, that we can go home at the end of the day. So don't let him know. And he, for some reason, he thinks that we have to work seven days a week. So don't tell him. It's only a five-day commitment. But he's really here. He's here seven days a week, many times. He's usually the first one in, the last one out. And so he's an amazing, amazing representative of our administrative team. So thank you, Darren, for everything that you do.
Microphone, I guess I'll do it this way. And Board would like to give you a certificate. Manager of the Year, the Azusa Unified School District Board of Education congratulates and commends Darren Howard on his selection by his peers as Manager of the Year nominee and presents him with this recognition as a token of appreciation for his dedication to the students and staff of the Azusa Unified School District. Presented on 15th of May 2018, signed Dr. Linda Kaminsky and Board President Helen Haramio. There you go.
Thank you, Darren.
And next, I'd like to invite Ramiro Rubacaba, Dr. Rubacaba, to honor our principal from Sierra High School, Paul Hernandez.
Let's give Paul a round of applause. So Mr. Paul Hernandez is another superhero. There's a common theme here. He's a superhero at Sierra High School. And I think the words that come to my mind with Paul is high expectations. He has brought to Sierra High School advanced placement courses to the students there. He has really raised the bar as far as treating our students like every other high school student should be treated. Access to electives, access to making sure that they have a rigorous education, dreaming big about college and career. And because of that, Sierra High School continues to be a model continuation school in the state of California. He believes in collaboration. He believes in effective communication. Had an amazing WASC visit that had the highest ratings possible, and the team was floored because of his leadership of bringing out the best in people. Please help me in congratulating Paul Hernandez, another superhero of the Azusa Unified.
Okay, good evening. I want to present this to Mr. Paul Hernandez. The Azusa Unified School District Board of Education congratulates and commends Paul Hernandez, Superman. I didn't say that here, I'm just kidding. On his selection by peers as a Manager of the Year nominee and present him with this recognition as a token of appreciation for his dedication to the students and staff of the Azusa Unified School District. Presented this day, 15th of May 2018, signed by Dr. Linda Kaminsky Superintendent and Board President Helen Haramio. And I just want to give him some pointers here. He is the best. My grandson goes to Sierra High School. I've seen him in action. He has great parent participation, and he does have classes that the graduations are like every other graduation. He didn't sing a lot because it's a different school. And I do see Mr. Hernandez has did an excellent job at Sierra High School, and I'm very proud to present this to him.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Steve Falkenberg and our Principal Victoria Velazquez, Principal of Hodge School.
This was a setup. Paul and Darren, you might be superheroes, but this is Wonder Woman. I'm here to spread the news that Victoria Velazquez has been nominated as District Manager of the Year. I'm not a news reporter, okay? But I do know that I had to do my research before I provided this news briefing. So the first place to go is to the records, the data, right? Data always tells the truth. She began teaching in Azusa in February 1990. That was last century, by the way.
Thank you.
She was a bilingual teacher. That sounds old, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Bilingual teacher. She's been a literary coordinator and a TOSA for the district. In 2011-12, she was the District Teacher of the Year. In 2013, Victoria was named as the Principal of Hodge Elementary School, and that's the reason why she's standing here tonight. She's doing such a great job. The next place you go to as a reporter is to the sources, right? So I went to her colleagues. I promised they would remain anonymous. Thank you, Erin Kramer. It's been said about Victoria that she has a profound and deep understanding and experience as far as developing curriculum and delivering instruction. One time, a long time ago, I was able to go in her class, and I saw that in action. She probably doesn't remember that, but it's an amazing dynamic that takes place. Victoria is student-focused, and she is a fierce, fierce advocate for students. Some of her traits, she's curious. Sometimes she's referred to as Victoria Asker Velazquez, A-S-K-E-R, or Victoria Questioner Velastis. She's caring, lighthearted, has a very strong ethical foundation, a person of faith. She's fair. She's an effective communicator. The third source I thought I'd go to as a reporter was myself, the Human Resources Administrator. I've seen Victoria, and I've worked with Victoria with some of our classified employees. I can say to you, she is respectful of classified personnel and has a deep sense of caring about their situations that they're in. She's recent, she applies reasonable accountability, and she's an advocate for her employees. We took an employee away from her last year, and I had to tug. It was an administrative move, but she, she kind of gripped and wouldn't let go, which is what I would have expected. I'm not a reporter, like I said, but this was an easy assignment. I think everyone agrees that Victoria is skilled and caring educator. We are proud to have her serve as our principal. She is positively affecting the lives of students and staff every single day. Let's congratulate her. By the way, one more thing. This is a news brief, and this is not fake news.
All right, next up, Arturo Ortega to honor Dana Mitchell.
So first and foremost, congratulations, Dr. Dana Mitchell, on this well-deserved recognition. Dana does so much for our department, the staff of Azusa Unified School District, the students, and the community as a whole. She has pioneered different versions and iterations of models of lesson study among staff, data protocols for looking at student work, and facilitating work around student academic discourse and writing. In doing so, she's pushing forward the learning of not only students, but of our staff in a cycle of continuous improvement. She is also a valuable team member of Cali, the LCFF Test Kitchen, and our Ed Services Director's team. She is a leader who leads various groups, including but not limited to Team TOSA, the Curriculum Center, the Music Department, and the Planning Time Team, growing those members and leading them to improve services for those that we serve. Lastly, she is an awesome thought partner to all of us, a great person to bounce ideas off of and iterate, a strong collaborator, a hands-on leader, and most of all, a true friend.
So this is for you, a token of appreciation on behalf of the school board and the staff. Azusa Unified School District Board of Education congratulates and commends Dr. Dana Mitchell on her selection by her peers as a Manager of the Year nominee and presents her with this recognition as a token of appreciation for her dedication to the students and staff of the Azusa Unified School District, signed by Dr. Kaminsky and President Helen Haramio. So I just want to say, I just love your energy, your motivation, your waking up every morning and just taking every task as an opportunity to improve lives of the students. I know you do all you do with your love. Otherwise, you wouldn't be doing it. So I congratulate you on that. Congratulations.
Thank you. And now, it's my pleasure to invite, I'm looking, looking, looking at the audience, is she here? Miss Stella Indahura, please come down and let's honor her. You have quite a fan club. You have quite a fan club. So Stella is our district-wide Manager of the Year, and I am so honored to have a chance to even honor you. So I remember when she came to our district in 2014-15. Her journey here, though, had started earlier. She had been in our district in 2009 to about 2012, is that right? And I heard stories about her. Good stories, good stories. I heard just what a great asset she was, how much she was missed when she decided to try out another district, and fortunately, how much she repented leaving. So when we had an opportunity to hire somebody new to our district, she applied, and it certainly has been our greatest benefit to have you here in the district. And she came at a very important time. Some of you may not remember. Think back about five years. Parents were complaining. Kids were complaining. They didn't like the food we were serving them. We had a breakfast program, we had lunch, and we had a little snack in the evening for our students. With Stella here, Stella who came from Uganda, when she was just 27 years old, to study and work hard here to help her family back at home, has also worked hard for us because now we have a breakfast program, we have a summer feeding program, we have a second chance breakfast program, we have frozen vegetables at recess time for kids, we have lunch, we have, instead of a snack, we have a full supper for anybody who's still on campus. And it's all thanks to you. Thank you so much. I actually was thinking of a lot of different adjectives for her, and the first one that popped in my mind was creative, a creative cook, because she really is. But she, she takes her creativity and expands it to the students because she allows the students to taste, to taste test potential foods, so that they have a chance to weigh in on what they would like to eat. And it all meets the highest nutritional standards. She told me she would like a little more money from the federal government, but she's still able to make do with what she gets. And I just can't thank you enough for what you're doing for our district, for our children, and the example that you set for all of us. Thank you so much.
Goodness, goodness, goodness. Grant me the words, please. Oh, my goodness. This is for you as well. I love. It's one of the great things about being in this position with the rest of this board is to be, is the ability to stand back and watch all of you superheroes work together on a daily basis. So it's actually like watching a squad going out there and taking on incredible work. So to see, to see things just kind of flourish the way that you all plan things together, to watch principals work together, to watch MOT working hand-in-hand with, with, with our, with our staff, with you. Oh, my goodness, it's absolutely incredible. From our perspective, it's just, it's watching magic happen, honestly. I don't know if you've ever had a conversation with someone where you're just kind of taken back. I remember having a conversation with Stella one time, and I just, I mean, I think you brought me to tears. You did. I mean, just talking about, about your, your passion and your genuine desire to want to feed a child. Like, that is just, it's mind-blowing to know that, that that is just coming from, from, from somebody's heart. Oh, my goodness. So I, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do here. It is going to be my recommendation at some point to have a television crew or have our, our Public Information Officer follow you around and your staff on a daily basis for a week to see the, the type of work that you do. We did, we spent a couple hours with you one day. Couple hours, went from kitchen to kitchen and watching the work that is involved with what you do is absolutely incredible, and the space that you have provided. Unbelievable. And the conditions that you have to work in. So we acknowledge that. We love you. Oh, my goodness. If there is, if I could give you everything, I would, just because I know you feed my children. You feed my children. So thank you so much, Stella, for everything. On behalf of the board, on behalf of everybody here in Azusa, thank you so much for everything.
Stella, we have a surprise for you. This is on behalf, from Foothill Credit Union, one of our partners, very generous. They have a check for you and an other certificate.
Oh, absolutely. Goodness. Yes, ma'am. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Board Members, Board President, Assistant Dr. Kaminsky, Cabinet Members, my bosses. I'm extremely humbled to be selected as this year's District Manager of the Year. All the managers nominated this year are excellent at what they do. Dana, Victoria, Darren, Paul, I congratulate you again. To my colleagues who voted for me, I am really humbled that you actually believe me. I proudly share this recognition with the 108 Nutrition Services employees who work tirelessly every day to feed the students in our district. I lead a team of wonderful, wonderful people. We feed over 3,000 breakfasts and 7,000 lunches in an hour. Lunch ladies, as we are famously known, are the true unsung heroes in our community and schools. As we all know, no child can perform to the best of their ability without proper nutrition. This is why my team is very instrumental in every student's life, from elementary all the way to high school. And it's because of this wonderful team that I stand before you tonight. When I was seven years old, my mother believed boarding school was the best choice for me. She wanted to make sure I got the best education she could afford as a single parent. Although the school I went to was one of the best in the country, their food left a lot to be desired. As a little girl, I went into the school cafeteria and... As a little girl, I went into the school cafeteria every day for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and my school cafeteria experience left me with bean nightmares. My staff know I hate beans. Monday through Friday, our cafeteria had the same item on the menu, porridge and beans. I know most of you are wondering, what's porridge? It's just like masa, and they serve that with beans. They were not refried, they were not doctored up, they were just plain boiled beans, and that's what we ate Monday through Friday. As students, we came up with tricks to add some sort of flavor to these dishes. We added margarine, we added ghee, we even added ketchup. You can imagine ketchup and beans. But it was still horrible. Most days and nights, I went hungry because I hated the food. I couldn't go home because I was in boarding school. The only time I had a really nice meal was when my mother came to visit me twice a month, and she brought me some home-cooked food. My teachers always commented on my report card that I had potential to do better, but I lacked, I lacked concentration. I now know why I didn't concentrate. I was hungry. When I finally got into child nutrition, I made a promise to myself, no child walking into our cafeteria would go hungry. It's crucial that we offer at least two choices and produce the best meals we possibly can. Funding is limited, but we strive to make lemonade out of lemons. Every day I come to work, it is my goal to make sure not a single seven-year-old experiences what I did in a school cafeteria. No child should go hungry. There are a couple of people who have been very instrumental in my career life that I would like to acknowledge. My office team, and they're out here tonight, they're somewhere back there. These ladies are dedicated to their jobs. Every time I request them to work on a project, they do it better than I imagined. You make me look good, and from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you, office team. I'm by my assistant director, you're somewhere back there. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for keeping me in check, and thank you for being very honest with me. I can't run this department without you. The students and parents in our community, you challenge and motivate me to do better. When I go out to the schools and meet with the students, sometimes they do interview me, and I stand right in front of them like I'm standing in front of the board. And they have, they're very, very honest. They are very critical, and they have very high expectations. So the students do keep me in check. My mentor, Michelle Michalinski, is here tonight. Thank you for teaching me everything I know about child nutrition. I know I can count on you. Even in retirement, I still call you and wake you up with questions about my job. My friend Tanya, thank you for taking my phone calls on that 210 freeway while we sit in traffic to discuss the best options we can give the students in our school districts. My friends who have come in from Pasadena to celebrate with me, I thank you for making that journey and coming. that journey and caring so much. I've developed so many relationships with food service ladies all over the San Gabriel Valley, and these people help me understand my job. They have a passion to feed the children in our communities, and I can't thank them enough for helping me become who I am in my career. I'm appreciative of you, my fellow lunch ladies. And my husband, who's here recording me, he doesn't like attention, but I thank you for listening to all my conversations about work in the wee hours of the night. Thank you. Thank you for making my home an absolute joy so that I'm able to perform my best at work. My bosses, board members, and my bosses, I thank you for supporting me. Thank you for putting up with me every time I storm into your offices with my out-of-the-box ideas because I have a lot of them. And lastly, I want to thank my mother. She's about 20 days late. She'll be flying in early June. I wish she could be sitting here because she would proudly, proudly display her Ugandan pride in me. My mother taught me to be respectful to others. My mother taught me to be humble, and my mother taught me to work hard. She was a single parent, and she valued hard work. I wouldn't be who I am without my mother and the values she instilled in me. Healthy meals are an important part of a school day, and a study from the Brown Center concluded that children who have school meals concentrate better in school. I want to thank you so much for honoring me today. I'm very, very humbled. And I want to thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Trying to catch my breath there. That was incredible. That was one of the best speeches I've ever heard, Stella. Thank you very much for your existence. Now, moving on to 6.2, we are here to recognize some more people and incredible work here within our district. This is a recognition of, and I apologize in advance if I can, if I do not pronounce your name correctly. Elizabeth Gallardo, Caitlin Hayward, Nefer Tepeba, and Destiny Jimenez to participate in the Health Occupation Students of America, HOSA International Finals. So we are recognizing these students, and we can have these students come down, please.
Come join me. And their teacher, Ms. Jenny Aguiar, right? So I can't tell you how proud we are of you, of you ladies who have done so well at the state level competition in California that they've qualified for the international competition, which really is international, with students from other countries. So maybe you can tell us a little bit about how you got here, what you're recognized for, and what you like best about your program.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Gallardo. I am the president of our HOSA chapter in Gladstone High School. And we started studying for our HOSA competition in late October, early November. So about in that time, we each chose our events, we got our books, and we started studying as hard as we could. And then around in our time in February, or, yeah, February, March, we started practicing our skills. So all three of them have skills, so it was drawing, drawing blood, a bunch of different skills that I don't have the name of right now. And in my event was 100-question test, and then an essay at the end. So each of us had different preparations throughout the whole year, but I had to make sure that they were each prepared with their books, their materials, and that Ms. Jenny and I were helping them as best as we could. Our HOSA stands for Health Occupation Students of America, and it, basically, it's an association that connects students from across the country that are interested in careers in the medical field. So personally, I am interested in to be a pathologist, and that's basically studying diseases, causes of diseases and all that. And my event was actually in pathophysiology. So I had to study as many diseases as I could, their causes, how to diagnose them, and what they each cause in the human body. And, oh, never mind.
On behalf of Gladstone HOSA, we'd like to thank the board for allowing our students to actually be able to compete. It's very costly, and I know that there are certain policies and rules, and I really appreciate the fact that you haven't allowed the students to leave to Dallas. We'll be in Dallas in June and competing against 10,000 students internationally from all of the United States, Mexico, and Canada. So these students, we have gold medal, pathophysiology, two bronze, one in medical assisting, and fifth place in medical assisting. And then we also have our biomedical laboratory, which Nefer won with the help of our two co-advisors, which is Randall Rogers and Edna Rogers. So we'd like to thank them. It's a, it's a huge commitment on a teacher's part and also on the student's part to be able to do this. A lot of hours out of school for them to really be successful and succeed in what they're doing. So we're very proud of our kids, and we're hoping the best for them in Dallas. So, and thank you, board, for allowing us to attend.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the board, then, we have certificates for each of you, and it reads, "This is a Unified School District Board of Education hereby recognizes and commands each one of you for your exemplary performance in local, state, and regional Health Occupation Students of America events and your invitation to compete in the HOSA Leadership Conference International Finals at Dallas, Texas, presented to you on this day, 15th of May, signed by Dr. Kaminsky and Board President Hamamio. Congratulations.
Incredible, incredible.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. This is an action item. So we have a first by Paul Nacashin. We have a second by Jerry Bibles Vogel. Do we have any further discussion? Now place your votes.
That's in consent.
That's right. An action item. On 6.2.
Action item.
6.2. Okay, so there is a correction on the agenda. This is not an action item. Moving on to 6.3, this is another employee recognition, and we have Dr. Rubakawa. Sir?
So it's my honor to call up, we're going to start off with Krista Rae. If you can please come forward. So the cube is a very rigorous process and an extremely elite thing to receive. It's not only doing what you do as a teacher, it's going above and beyond. It's years of recognition. It's a whole set of criteria of service to the community. And previously, as your principal and the person who hired you, I can say that Krista goes way above and beyond. Her ability to connect with all students at risk, students who are there on a daily basis and just want to excel, her ability to bring in technology, her ability to structure lessons that are engaging, had me engaged the whole time when I'd go observe her. But the number one thing is her ability to establish relationships. The students know that she loves them, she cares about them, is there for them, and always will be for them. You are such an asset and very deserving of this award and much, much more. It is my honor to present the cube, to present Krista to receive the cube award on behalf of the Azusa Unified School District. Please help me congratulate Krista Rae.
I am, I am here to present Krista Rae with the certificate, the Azusa Unified School District Board of Education hereby congratulates and commends Krista Rae on your recognition as an Azusa Unified School District Outstanding Employee recipient of the Cube Award for your many contributions to success of staff and students of the Azusa Unified School District, presented on this day, 15th of May, 2018, signed by Dr. Linda Kaminsky and Board President Helen Hadamio. Here you go. And she has this beautiful cube that says "Outstanding Employee of Azusa Unified School District." It's really pretty. And what I know about her is that she did four years as an instructional aide, so she has furthered her education to become a teacher. So she deserves this outstanding award. Congratulations.
And just in case you didn't know what she does, not only does she teach, PBIS coach, WOS coordinator, supervises our games, supervises our dances, and I can go on and on and on. Congratulations, Krista. Now, sometimes our employees are so awesome that they don't receive one cube, they receive multiple cubes. And I'd like to call up for the encore award, Ms. Elena Spinoza. Are you here this evening? Elena Spinoza, yes. Let's give her a round of applause. Closer, okay. Principal Sam Perdomo could not be here, but he gave me like five pages to speak about you, okay? He said that you coordinate everything for him, from ELAC, coffee with the principal, reaching out, making phone calls, coordinating all kinds of events that he could not keep up with you. He mentioned that he could not keep up with you despite you wearing heels. You're faster than him, okay? He asked me to wholeheartedly congratulate you on your many years of service. How many?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine years of service, but not just any type of service, above and beyond. You are very deserving of the encore, which is more than one cube. Thank you for everything you do, for making a difference in our students' lives, our staff, our entire community. You are an inspiration. Congratulations.
I want to congratulate Elena for 29 years of service and dedication. I've seen her in action at center and at Foothill with the parents. She does a fantastic job. And I've been on the Board of Education for seven years. I've never seen this encore award, which means that she has received the cube already. Now, this is a second step, and it's heavy. Here, you grab it. So thank you for your 29 years of service and dedication to Azusa Unified School District.
One more round of applause, please. Stop smiling. 6.4. We are, this is a recognition of U.S. Congresswoman Grace F. Napolitano Congressional High School Art Competition and Artistic Discovery winners. And Kaminsky, you're taking that. And if you haven't seen some of the artwork, please go onto our website, click on the links, and you can see the artwork. It's absolutely incredible. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Absolutely incredible.
I only wish I had a smidgen of that talent. And I'd like to invite Arturo Otega to come up and announce our winners.
Good evening, number one. I would just like to call up the following students who were winners of Representative Grace F. Napolitano's office. And so for judges' choice, Samantha Garcia, ninth grade.
So it's with great pleasure that we give this award to Samantha Garcia for winning the judges' choice award at the Congressional, Representative Grace Napolitano's Annual Congressional High School Art Competition. And so is that her art piece up there?
Yes.
So can you tell us a little bit about that art piece?
For this art piece, so first, before we did our, because this is for a project, so we just had to find pictures that we use for like inspiration. So I knew I wanted to have like flowers in mine, so I just picked a bunch of like pictures like that, and then I ended up using just one for inspiration. So then this is like what it came out as.
And of course, we have to ask the teacher.
I'm her art teacher, and I just have to let everybody know, this didn't begin as a color piece of work. We were about two days away from the deadline of the competition, and I said, "No, Samantha, you must add color." And, and she did a spectacular job in, in a day and a half, really. And a very deserving award. You can see so.
Next up, we'd like to call our second place, Manuel Cervantes, 12th grader.
So Manuel, you got second place in the competition. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your art piece?
Well, when I was thinking of an art piece to do, I wanted to choose something that I felt really passionate about. And one thing I really love, among other things, is dogs. I'm a huge dog lover, and specifically the Shiba Inu breed, which is the breed of that dog up there, is one of my favorite breeds of all time. Actually, it's probably my favorite breed. And when I was thinking, like, I wanted to do a dog, but I wasn't sure what to look for specifically. So I wanted to get something that felt like, not just, not just like beautiful, like in its appearance, but also like striking and somewhat like impressionistic, if that's a word. I don't know if that's a word or not. But so I chose this dog here, this picture. And I will mention the tie. That was pretty much the sum of my accomplishments there, that tie. Took me about all the time that I've Took me about all the time that I've been working on it in class, but... Oh, the medium is graphite.
I just want everybody to know, I mean, this is just, we don't have the original piece of work because part of the prize is that Manny's artwork gets to hang in the Congresswoman's Sacramento office for the entire year and be displayed for all to see. So unfortunately, all that we have is just a photograph and you can't begin to see the amazing detail that went into this piece of work. Manny didn't, he, no joking, did not sit. He did not sit for, I would say about three weeks. He came in every day and he stood at that table and worked on that piece of artwork diligently, every single day. And again, very deserving of second place. Congratulations.
Sure. And unable to be here tonight, but we still want to honor them. An honorable mention is Johnny Quijada, 11th grader.
Johnny couldn't be here tonight. He's very, very sick. So I am here to accept this award on his behalf. Again, just amazing, amazing work. The picture just does not do it justice. You have to see it in person. And you can at the district office, it will be there for a little while displayed. And if I could just tell you a little bit about the competition. I believe there were 19 schools that participated in the competition, 94 pieces of work submitted. Gladstone High School won an award in each of the sections of the competition. Second place, judges' choice, and an honorable mention.
And did you want, did you want to announce the art show that's coming up?
Yes, we have a very exciting, on Thursday, our grand opening of the first ever art gallery. We're calling it D-Gallery. And we are inviting all to come and look at this amazing, amazing curated show of winning artwork from across the district. And we're very, very excited about it.
So, yes, Samantha, come back up here. We'll just take a quick picture all together.
Awesome. Congratulations. Moving on with recognitions tonight and awards, we are recognizing the Azusa High School Boys Tennis Team. We're on 6.5. Mr. Balmerito, sir?
So I have the honor of announcing that our boys tennis team performed amazingly. So if I could have Omar Briano, Matthew Figueroa, Michael Rodriguez, Rudy Gallardo, Andy Garcia, Alexis Corillo, Angel Garcia, and Noel Moreno step up to the stage, our podium? No? All right. They're playing tennis, exactly. All right, so I will go over the accomplishments. So they were our Mountain View champs. They were undefeated in league this year in both singles and doubles. And they got all the way to CIF this year, which is an amazing, amazing accomplishment. So congratulations to the team. Thank you, guys.
And we also, they all have certificates, so we'll be waiting for them. The Azusa Unified School District Board of Education hereby congratulates and commends all of the above mentioned in recognition of your role as member of the Azusa High Boys Varsity Tennis Team, which claimed the Montview League Championship with an undefeated league record, presented on the 15th day of May, 2018, with Superintendent Linda Kaminsky, Dr. Linda Kaminsky, and Board President Helen Hara Miel.
Awesome. Thank you. Just to make sure, I'm not quite sure what happened tonight, but let's make sure that we have them back and we'll reschedule. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to 6.6, this was actually an amendment to the agenda tonight. We are recognizing the Gladstone High School Boys Varsity Swim Team. Are they here tonight?
All right, so I'm gonna ask all of you, could you all come up here with me? Team and coach, coaches, please?
Love it.
Come on in, just keep on, come on in. All right, so before I'm gonna pass out these awards, I'm gonna let the coach say a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you board, thank you, Ms. Dr. Kaminsky. I have a little speech. First of all, I thank you for this recognition of the Boys Varsity Swim undefeated league championship season. As you know, we have long practices because of using a different facility. We leave school at 4:30 in the afternoon and get back at 7:30. At the same time, I would like to publicly thank, if you don't mind, Herman Flores of Sierra Vista High School for being so hospitable to us and allowing us to use his pool for the last six years. The boys team finished 11-0 overall, 7-0 in league record, won the finals with a point total of 316 points, with six first-place finishes from 11 races. They have the distinct honor of being the first group to raise the league championship banner in our gym. Four years ago, we qualified four boys for CIF. And this year, we, they qualified, no, four years ago, they qualified for the 200 free relay and for the 50 free individual. This year, these, seven of these young men qualified for three relay events and two individual, 50 free and the 100 free, which is at CIF. As, I can tell you that as much as they are proud of what they've done, they are a very humble team. They beat a few of the teams by a large, large margin, but they were not boisterous, they were humble, they were good winners, gracious winners. I'd like to give most of the credit of this success to my two assistants, Samantha Penya and Coach Ray. I would like to acknowledge one senior that is not here today, but her sister came in her place, Brianna Hiragami. For the four years that she swam for me, she has won a medal every year in her, in league finals, at least four medals a year. So she did very well. I just wanted to say that these young men have persevered without having, you know, without having a pool, of course, but they persevered through battling through their drills, battling through beating teams like Cathedral, Eisenhower, Ontario. So they had a very tough preseason and beat every team in the league by a good margin. Their only competition was Edgewood. Alex DePoe. This young man is the first in Gladstone history to qualify for CIF finals in the 50 free. Not only did he finish 15th out of 36, but if you really think about it, he finished 15th out of whole division four. And with a time of 23.29. So I don't think I can even walk 50 yards in 23.29. But he finished in 23.29. And as nervous as he was, he will have the distinct honor of being the first in Gladstone history to go on to CIF finals. One thing I want to point out, we have an event in swim that's called the 500 Free. They do 20 laps. Now, doing it, seeing is very difficult. Doing it, not being able to see. This young man right here, Anthony Viera, it took a whole team effort with so many swimmers at the end of the pool yelling at him what lap he was on, and another at the other end telling him the wall, wall, wall. And I think his best time for the 500 Free? 7:32. Their team unity is beyond, it makes me very proud to be part of this team, seeing how they pulled together and how they helped each other. Again, the Gladstone Varsity Boys Swim Team.
So we are so proud of the work that you guys have done and the outcome this year. Undefeated, that's amazing, that's really great. And I know, I know you guys have to spend a lot of time driving all the way to Sierra Vista High School and back to do your practice. So the board knows that and we hear that, we heard you saying about the pool. So having swam for the Dolphins and back then with the old pool, we had to have our meets at Gladstone High School's pool, right? We know it's well overdue as a board. So this is how we're gonna do, we have certificates for every single one of you. So I'm gonna call your name and I want you to come up. Tell us what you swam, right? If you swim a lot of them, just pick the top one or two that you swam in, or events. And then if you're a senior, let us know what you're gonna be doing next year, all right? So we're gonna start with, it's alphabetical, right? So Adam Badillo. All right, what'd you swim?
I swam the 200, 500, and the 4x100.
And he's a junior.
And you're a junior, all right.
One of my returners.
Next we have Jaden Capule. Is it Capule?
Hi, my name is Jaden Capule and I did a lot of events, but my two main events were the 100 breast stroke and the 200 IM, which in the finals, I got two, like second place for the 200 IM and first place for 100 breast stroke.
Next we have Alan Fajardo. Oh, not here, all right. Well, give this to coach. Alexis Gutierrez. All right, what did you swim?
50 free.
And you're a 500, too?
A 100, too.
All right. Diego Jimenez.
I did the 500 freestyle and the 100 freestyle, but I would also like to thank Sam, Ray, and Miss Saez because they pushed me a lot in my first year of swimming and they pushed me to the limits and made me proud of myself.
All right, next we have Dylan Lopez.
Hello, my name is Dylan Lopez and my two events were the 200 IM and the 100 backstroke.
Next we have Isaac Ortiz. All right, here's a mic. What'd you swim?
I did several strokes. My main ones were the 100 breast and the 200 IM. I also did the 100 fly with my brother, but I did not win none of them, but you know, I tried.
All right, next we have Joseph Ortiz. Okay, what'd you swim?
I swam the medley, I also swam the 100 fly. Also was in the relay for the 200 and the 400, right?
Next we have Alexander Rivera.
I swam the 50 and the 100 free.
Darian Salazar.
I swam the 100 free, the 200 free, and I was also in both the freestyle relays. Can I also recognize that it's Alex's birthday today? He's turning 18.
All right, we have Itzali Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Itzali and I swam the 200 medley, the 100 back, the 100 free, and then the 4x100 relay. And shout out to Sam, shout out G Unit.
We have Anthony Jose Viera. Turn around, take a picture.
Well, for the record, Jose is actually my first name, not my middle name. But I swam the 500 free and the 200 free.
All right, we'll have to get that fixed for you. All right, Christopher Villalobos.
I swam the 100 free and the 200 free.
And last we have Adrian Isagire.
I swam in four events. I swam in the 200 IM, 100 breast, and I swam on two relay teams. And I just want to say that I'm proud of all these boys here today. And as my last year as a senior, I'm just very honored to have swam with all these boys. And I couldn't have done it, we couldn't have done it with our coaches, all their support, and then all the support of our community. So we would just like to thank all of you and thank you for what you've given us. And so next year...
So, so Coach, I have to tell you, I'm really impressed by how many kids you have swimming the 200 IM, right? Usually that's a tough one to get to fill, but to have so many, that's really great. And I'm gonna tell you guys, I see a water polo team in the fall. What do you think? Maybe, maybe?
They want to.
All right, let's take one picture, a group picture.
So we have a birthday, right? Okay, on three. Whose birthday is it? Alex, on three. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you.
Congratulations, guys. That was incredible. Moving on with some business now. One last round of applause for all of that. I can't stop smiling. On to seven point zero, this is Items from the Floor, Public Comment on Agenda or Non-Agenda Items. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. No action can be taken on non-agenda items. Individual speakers may be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Prior to addressing the board, please fill out the Request to Speak, Public Comment Blue Card and submit it to the Board Secretary. In regards to, real quick, um, I'd just like to say a couple of things. We know that we have a very sensitive item coming up, eleven point one, um, and that is in regards to the surplus property and the recommendations that were made by the Seven Eleven Committee. Just want to let everybody know that, um, upon the board accepting the recommendations does not necessarily mean that we are going to turn around and close a school tomorrow, uh, next year or any, or, or anything like that. This could take potentially years. We know that this is very sensitive and as a board, we understand the issues. And even though you may not have seen us at, at these meetings, we, they were recorded, we did watch them, we know the issues, um, and we know the memories, we know the tradition, we know the history that, that falls behind each one of our school sites. So we want all of you guys to know that, that even though we do accept, if we accept this, this resolution tonight, it does not mean anything. Every situation is fluid. We were faced with some challenges earlier on this year in terms of, of, of budget, but it does, again, this does not, this does not mean that we're gonna turn around and close a school. Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that we put that out there before we start. And, and we hear you, okay, as a board. First up, we have Mr. Jorge V. Rosales. Sir.
Good evening, board members and audience and staff. Item eleven-one that you just mentioned, um, I want the board and the public to know that on the agenda that was posted on the website, the only item that was posted was the resolution, not the full report. The resolution makes reference to the report, which was not attached last Friday. I notified the superintendent last Friday evening when I saw the agenda and this morning I was informed that it had just been posted, just this morning. I mean, it's this thick. So I don't know if you, you as the board received it or any of the other public saw it, but again, I, I don't think it's fair for the board to take action tonight on a resolution that makes reference to the report in it. The third recital indicates that the report is attached to the resolution and it was not. And then it just, and reviewing briefly the report, page two made reference to eight meetings that I, I was part of the Seven Eleven Committee between February thirteenth and April twenty-seven, including a public hearing. Actually, there was two public hearings, one on March twenty-seventh, when the committee voted only to close or recommend surplus of Sierra High School only. And then subsequent to that, there was a second public hearing, April twenty-seventh. And I was not present at that meeting, but the vote was five-two to close Sierra and the adult school and also, um, Mountain View and Magnolia. So there's errors on the report itself. And then just one last item, eleven-four. A little concern about the bid for that particular work item. It's one point seven million being recommended and the high bid is almost seventy-eight percent higher than the low bid. Even the second low bid is nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar difference or fifty-five point seventy-four percent. So I think you should, you need to look at that one very closely.
Next up, Maria Montanades.
Good evening, my name is Maria Montanades. I'm here to speak with you regarding the property surplus report that you will be receiving shortly. Aside of being a resident of Azusa, I also teach and have my daughter at Mountain View. My daughter has been in our schools for two years now and has been embraced by a caring and enriching school community. I'm not here to threaten with taking my daughter out of the district if the school closes. I believe in what our teachers do and I know that she will receive the same level of support at any of our schools if anything was to happen. What I am here to ask is for your due diligence in this matter. The mere idea of having our school on such a list has cast a cloud of doubt and uncertainty over our community and we have been living with this uncertainty for the past four months. What has made things more difficult during this time has been the inability of our staff members to answer questions from our parents. All we can say to them is that anything is possible. When this whole idea came about, it was my initial understanding that schools with lower enrollment or in close proximity to each other would be considered. Imagine our surprise when we found ourselves on the list. It felt as though the rug had literally been pulled from under us. Mountain View is neither the school with the lowest enrollment and perhaps what is most concerning is that the schools closest to us do not appear to be viable options. Hodge is almost at capacity. Valleydale will be an almost mile and a half walk for our students who live north of the freeway and Paramount, which is closer, has not been remodeled. It defies logic to relocate three hundred and fifty students from a school that has been remodeled to one that has not. I also have concerns for our dual language program. I understand that programs will be transferred to other schools if a school does close, but moving a program as young as ours will commit a loss of students already in the program. This will not serve to strengthen a program that thrives on patience and consistency. I know that each school is, is a valuable asset to the community that it serves and I'm sure that each one of you will find this decision difficult to make. But what I am here to ask is that as you proceed, that you do so with the most transparency, that you look at all the factors at hand and that you keep the public well informed. Something such as distance a child will end up walking to school should matter in this process. Difficult decisions are easier to process when the facts are clearly, clearly laid out for us. In this particular situation, many of us at Mountain View felt as if we were chosen at random, making this entire process even more difficult and frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Santillan.
Yes, good morning, I mean, good morning, good evening. I, I apologize if I offend anybody, but this is how I feel and so, there you go. Okay, first I would like to thank the students, teachers and parents for supporting their schools. I understand a school is closing due to financial issues, so I, then I asked myself, why is this happening? Could it be the travel conferences at a seventy-five percent more than surrounding districts? Are the approving, approving a six thousand five hundred raise to a superintendent whose salary is already, uh, already higher than the national average in two thousand seventeen, even without seeing the budget? Or could it be unqualified individuals handling the money or overpaying for repairs without getting multiple bids? This looks suspicious. And for the board members who actually care and go out to the schools and talk with the teachers and students, um, I want to thank you and applaud you, that it shows that you care. This may not be the reason why a school is closing, but it doesn't help. I understand that election is coming up in November for some of the board members and I encourage people to go out there and vote so another school will not close.
Take my name off, cause we're probably gonna have a lot of time left over, but I just wanted to say that we stand by our teachers a hundred percent and when there is a vote of no confidence that is taken and so many of our valued teachers lack confidence in certain elected officials, that says a lot. Not a long time ago, I remember the signs in the car windows that said, "Fair Settlement Now," or recently a rally that was going to take place but was canceled due to an agreement of five percent increase in contributions to health benefits. Our teachers have enough, enough to do teaching our kids. That's sad that they have to take more time out just to make their needs known and heard. We all shouldn't have to pressure people and go above and beyond our jobs just to make other people do theirs. Like my husband said and many others, like Mr. Rosales pointed out, that I thought was hilarious, cause usually if something is bid so high and you're already financially in the hole, you would pick a smaller bid. So it makes me think that maybe the higher bid is somebody's friend out here. I don't know. But, um, there's a lot of financial flaws in this district as well as communication issues. When communication stops, things start becoming one-sided. Let's keep communication open and ask that you continue to listen to the needs of our teachers, our students and our community that you're supposed to serve. Please, I ask everyone here, please vote in November, cause if something is right, we gotta change this. This is ridiculous.
For the record, Keisha? Yes, okay, thank you. Next up, Angel Clunney.
Um, I'm actually here on a, a good note, um, I'm, for once, I, I have to say that the recognition was really pleasant to watch and I, congratulations to everybody. It was really fun, brought back a lot of memories of my brother being on the swim team and the water polo team and my mom making funny comments, thinking they touched the ground. And instead of treading water the whole time, those boys are in for a shock if they don't know more about water polo. But, um, what I'm here for is, first of all, I'd like to give every one of the board members and the superintendents a ticket to this year's fashion show, which is this Saturday, to please come. And, um, we'd like to invite you to come. I don't know what it's gonna be like, it's always a last minute thing, I stress out tremendously. They kind of like, oh, no problem, we got this covered. I really stressed out this week, this year, um, but this is a group that pulls things together at the last minute, so it should be interesting. But I do want to invite you to come. The other thing I'm here for is, um, back in the early nineties, um, I think, did we come up short? No, no, they're for, well, we might need more. I'll send some over, okay? In the early nineties, I started a project with my kids on doing a service learning project for kids in need at our elementary schools. And so my students would make these, oops, these little shorts and we would donate them to the elementary schools in our district. Okay, well, I now have, because of the course, over the course of a couple of years and not being able to take field trips at the last minute because of testing and whatnot, I have three, over three hundred pairs of shorts. So I divided them up in twelve boxes and I'm inviting the board to take a couple of boxes to each school and give them to the elementary schools. They all have the name, like the name on it and we've got them all kind of divided up and I would really appreciate it if you could give them to the elementary schools on our behalf and on the fashion. There are also a few little jumpers that some of the advanced kids did too. But this was one of the best service projects that benefited my students both skills-wise and also teaching them to give back to their communities. And, um, I like it better when they can deliver them themselves and help the kids. It's quite fun to watch, especially all these kids speaking Spanish and I have no clue what they're saying. And watching the little boys get more picky than the girls sometimes, so I, I'm sad that they don't get that, that opportunity. But maybe you can just have the principal's relay, but they, therefore whoever they see fit, okay? And I'll leave them over here, feel free to take boxes.
Thank you. Manuel Ortiz, sir. Good to see you.
See you, President Armillo. Good evening, President Armillo, honorable board members, staff and audience. My name is Manuel Ortiz, I'm a council member in the city of Irwindale. And the reason I'm here today is in support of Options for Youth School located in the city of Irwindale. Options for Youth is a school that has been serving the students in Azusa, Irwindale and other communities for eighteen years. They provide educational opportunities to students who have dropped out of school or are at the risk of dropping out of school. Options for Youth is positively impacting the lives of many students and making countless dreams come true. I can, I'm gonna share some examples of student success stories at Options for Youth. Lucia, she attended, attended Azusa High School and was constantly fighting with other students. Her probation officer recommended that she attend, attend Options for Youth. During her attendance at Options for Youth, Lucia turned her life around. She stopped fighting with the students and began to focus on her education. She applied and was admitted into multiple colleges. Additionally, Lucia participated in the program for college-bound students at Options for Youth and earned a twenty-five thousand dollar scholarship to attend Sonoma State College. Currently, she's a sophomore at Sonoma and is studying English literature. Another Options for Youth student, Dylan, enthusiastically walks two point five miles to school from his home in Azusa every day. He's a model independent studies student and has thrived at Options for Youth. Dylan is a part of the bilingual scholars program and has excelled as a result of the one-on-one instruction that he has received. He's looking forward to completing high school and attending college. Unfortunately, due to the changes in, in California law, these students and others may not be able to continue their positive educational opportunities at Options for Youth in Irwindale. The school will be closing because the law will require resource centers to operate in the school district where they are located. Since Options for Youth is in Irwindale, since Options for Youth in Irwindale is located in the Azusa School District, they would like to work with the Azusa School District to operate a charter school so they can continue serving the students in Azusa, Irwindale and other communities. Our hope is that the Azusa School District and the board members can look into a possibility and give Options for Youth an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hi.
Good evening, I am Jaden Ontiveros, a fourth grader at Magnolia Elementary. Let me tell you something. Why, why don't you take my place as a student and feel how depressing it is to, to lose something very important? What if you lost your job? You would be sad too, so stop and think. Do you want us to be sad? Magnolia is a safe place and they have remodeled the school for the better education for the students. Magnolia has taught me amazing things and now I am ready for fifth grade. Please take my recommendation and take Magnolia off the surplus list. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Lynn Green.
Hi, I am here representing the parents of Magnolia School. We are really worried that our school is on the surplus list and that you are planning to sell our property. Maybe for you, selling our school is not very important, but you are only focusing on a temporary benefit. But in reality, you are affecting the future of our kids and the next generation. Our school is situated in a bilingual community and in a safe place. We are worried that you're going to affect our kids emotionally and psychologically if the school is closed. This is an unexpected change for both our children and ourselves, the parents. We are asking that you consider that your decision will affect not only our students but the community. Also, students from Azusa Pacific University will be affected because they come to our school to practice. We are asking you in the name of our community, our students, our parents, and the school staff to please disregard the recommendation of the 7-11 committee and withdraw our school from the surplus list. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good evening, I am Joanie from Mountain View PTO. Let me start by quoting Nelson Mandela. Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. In the past three months of attending 7-11 surplus committee, it was on February 28th that they recommended the following schools not to be declared as a surplus: Mountain View School and Elementary School. And the schools they declared a surplus are the following: Gladstone Street, Magnolia, Paramount, and Sierra High. And on April 28th, in less than 35 minutes, they were able to come up with a new list of schools to be declared a surplus. They said that it has something to do with the revenue and the enrollment. But in the course of this discussion, they never show a comparable table listing of all schools citing these variables. They rely entirely with all the facts that Mr. Bamarito provided for them. They did not even have the initiative to visit the school and see for themselves the condition of each one of them before making the recommendations. Have they done anything aside from listening to the facts and really stepped out to do their duty as a committee instead of pointing fingers as to who is recruiting them to vote out a particular school? Do you consider the committee competent enough to make that recommendations? I plead with good intention to disregard the committee's recommendation and instead put all the elementary schools in the list because of the following reasons. First, in putting all the schools in the list, intra-district transfers can be avoided. It's fair and square for all the schools. Second, we're going to protect the property from the possibility of selling it to charter school should the law be passed in June or July. Third, the board will have a wide option as to which schools to be considered. Fourth, I recommend that the board should personally visit each school and really look into the accurate data as to the capacity to add students, location safety, need for modernization, and potential property value. The fact that our school, Mountain View, is in the list only gives the parents a negative impression that we are closing. So expect an exodus of parents leaving the district to seek a better and stable education for their children. Expect too that our school's enrollment will dramatically decline and this would only lead to justify that indeed our school deserved to close because we are already set to failure. Education is a tool. Education is a weapon to change the world. How can we do that if the very foundation of their education is unstable? Think about that and decide to fight for a purpose that is bigger than yourself. Thank you very much.
Yvonne Uriel.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kaminski, Superintendent Cabinet. My name is Yvonne and I'm here today representing CSCA. I have just, we have just ended a successful year of negotiations. Our members will be seeing some relief in the cost of health insurance with a total of 30% increase in the district's contribution toward our premiums. We would like to thank the district's negotiation team: Mark Bamarito, Ramiro Rubicava, Steve Falkenberg, and Amber Sanchez for their professionalism, transparency, and respect that they have shown us throughout this entire year. We appreciate Ramiro's enthusiasm in building a bridge of mutual respect between the district and our members to improve working conditions and the benefits for our classified employees. Although we were a little hesitant in the appointment of Mark Bamarito as district CBO, he has proven himself with his skills in negotiating with vendors and researching, and I'm sorry, in research in new and better ways to benefit and save the district money, which benefits our students and our members. We would also like to thank Dr. Kaminski and you, the board, for listening to our members from MOT Department who went to you with concerns and by taking action on those concerns and requesting the Fitmat report to be done at no charge to the district. From the beginning, Ramiro and Mark have kept us informed in the progress and results of the Fitmat report and have collaborated with myself and our executive board members on all of the MOT concerns. We look forward to working with them in the future on making the district a great place to work and a great place for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have no more cards for tonight. We are now moving on to 8.0 comments, reports, and requests by the board. We'll start with board member Jerry Babbels Vogel.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I appreciate you coming, all of you parents from Mountain View and from Magnolia. I attended almost all of the 7-11 committee meetings, so that's my interest in it. I wanted to make sure that I heard everything that was said. There are a few I missed. I watched them online. And you are being heard and it could take years in this process. So please, join us working together and we will do what we can, all right? We definitely, we hear you, okay? And you kids, good job coming up. I have heard you several times come up and speak and I am so proud of you for speaking your minds with such respect and such command of yourself. So I'm very, 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 I'm sure we're all very proud of you for that. I'd like to thank Stella. Congratulations for Supervisor of the Year, Manager of the Year. And if you ever like, if you like lentil soup, she's got a great recipe for that. So, and all the other managers that were congratulated and our swimming team and our tennis team, it was just a really nice, I've been on the board for two and a half years and this has been one of my favorite times, just hearing, you know, congratulating and bringing up and sending it out to the community so that they can actually see what we do. So congratulations to everybody involved and thank you.
No questions.
I just want to congratulate everyone today for the awards recipients today and for the hard work that they do contributing to the district and the student outcomes here in the district. I will reserve my comments about the 7-11 once that item comes up, but I just want to encourage everyone to come up to visit the D Gallery. Obviously, it's gonna happen, the opening on May 17th, 5 to 7. I was one of the judges who selected some of this work. It's a beautiful room that got transformed from a classroom into a gallery, so a lot of work went into it, collaboration with all the art teachers in the district. So the result is being shown, obviously, for the first year of this D Gallery opening, which is going to be on May 17th at the Gladstone High School. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. V. Felicia Espina.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone that received their awards today. And I'm just happy to announce at the, I have the 100 Mile Club at Murray School. I finally met my 50 miles. So I did 25 a couple of months ago and I'm like, I don't know if I can keep going, but hopefully by the end of this month I'll be at my 75 miles. It's a great 100 Mile Club at Murray School where parents, staff, and students participate, walk every single morning. It's an incentive for them to walk, you know, they spend time together. Parents walk with their child and kids will talk to me, will have a conversation, so it's a lot of fun. If anyone wants to join us, we can, they're at 7:45 every morning before school starts. And the teachers are telling me that the kids are more energized, they don't come in all tired, so it's a good thing. I also went to the East San Gabriel Valley ROP Merit Scholarship Award breakfast and I want to congratulate all the scholarship winners and thank ROP and the business for their partnership. I went to the Magnolia Adult Transitional Open House and Tea. Many parents attended and Stephanie de la Torre is doing a great job. I went to Murray School's Open House and Paramount Elementary. They both had great turnouts. Murray School, the 5th grade students did a fantastic job on, they were being, it was like a museum in their cafeteria and they were like dressed up and famous people, for instance Barack Obama and Amelia Earhart and Michelle Obama and they were just standing frozen. It was like the wax museum. And they said, "Okay, if you touch them, they'll move." So you touch them and they'll start saying hello on Barack Obama, "I was born blah, blah, blah." I mean, it was fantastic. They memorized everything. So the same thing at Paramount. I went to the 4th grade class and the students there had great projects and meet the masters and that's also about great artists that they, you know, talk about and they, the students will learn about them. And I think it's great that our kids are so young and they're learning about, you know, music, art, and famous people and these programs are fantastic. I went to Center School, the Nutrition Services 2018 Taste Testing Event. The food was delicious and my favorite was the turkey meatballs with wheat spaghetti. Kids were loving it. They didn't know that it's wheat. They had wheat pizza, I liked the ice cream, and the kids just went from booth to booth and again, thank you Stella. And also Vice Principal Mr. Costa did a great job. It was very well organized. Want to thank the vendors and Stella and her staff did a fantastic job. I went to the Zusa Library this morning for books for baby reception, showing the young moms how important it is for them to read to their child, not only when they're born, but also when they're in the womb. So they had gift flags and they're educating the young moms on how to take care of the baby. And I want to thank Elaine Strickland and her staff also. And I just want to say just one thing regarding the item 11.1. I just want to say, you know, I know how important it is, you know, about your schools and your students and I've been to every single meeting and I heard you and I totally understand. I just don't want you to worry too much. You know, I know it's very emotional and I know it's your kid's school, like the little young lady came up and spoke about that. But, you know, I myself will personally look into other options before even closing a school, you know, if possible. I will strongly remember what you all said. And today, even on accepting that 11.1, it's only accepting the recommendation. It's not that I agree with the recommendation, but we need to accept it, but it doesn't mean I agree with it. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Juan Cruz Gonzalez.
Thank you. I'll be brief, but I'll first start off, I'm gonna take the privilege of saying a little bit about Victoria Velazquez since I didn't say anything earlier and my other, my other fellow board members talked about the other managers. I just want to say, if you've ever had a chance to walk through a school with Mrs. Velazquez, it's really amazing to see her go through and seamlessly just sort of slide in, take over the class for a little bit, do a little coaching, right, right in the middle of just her day and slide right back out. And just to see the teachers and how she interacts with them and the leadership that she provides in terms of instruction, right? We want to make, our principals are key instructional leaders, so I just wanted to say I really, I really value that and appreciate that and that's the reason that you're one of our shining stars, Victoria. So saying that, I also just wanted to briefly talk about the art exhibit because I'm really excited that we have an arts-based professional learning community across the district, right? So this means that we have, our art teachers across the district are coming together and working together and planning to be able to make sure that our arts instruction goes deeper. And so I'm really excited that we're spreading this concept of professional learning networks beyond just the core academic areas to other really key important areas and to see the fruits of it coming out this year. Finally, it was really great to be able to recognize all of the students today and see the great things that are happening with the artwork, with our sports teams. I know our families have trust our district with their students and we see it as an obligation to make sure that our students have the best opportunities that there are out there. We want to make sure that our students are successful and can leave our district going to do whatever they want to do, whether they want to go into college or go into a career. So I will end it with that and just with the 7-11 committee, I'm gonna reserve my comments as like Paul said, for the actual agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you. We started to talk about Victoria Velazquez and walking with her. We have a great story. So I was one of her feisty parents when she first became a principal. And all out of love, I can remember us having a conversation initially and I had come to her with some concerns and I was passionate and I was just, just one of her PTA moms, just ready to take everything on. And we walked, walked up to her one day and she said, "Can you walk and talk? I have two minutes." And it was, but it was probably one of the best things that she could have told me because it really launched one of the best relationships that I've had with the principal. I mean, it's just that, I mean, I think we modeled what a parent, what a parent organization and what, and what a staff administration could do. We did amazing things together and I want to congratulate you personally and everybody else too. I mean, I have stories with each one of you, but I had to share that, so thank you very much, Victoria. Also, with that said, Saeda Valdez, just want, if you're watching and if you eventually watch this, please send prayers and strength her way as she recovers. We miss you and we send well wishes with you and your staff and your students. I've already said a couple of things about 11.1. We'll say, we'll say some more comments. We have some more comments as we proceed, so thank you very much. And we're now moving on to 9.0 comments and reports by student board member, cabinet and superintendent, Mr. Robert Freho. How are you today, sir?
I'm doing good, Ania.
All right, talk to us.
Thank you. I would say congratulations to our award winners tonight and for my report tonight, starting with Sierra High School. Compassion Challenge Field Trip, Homeboy Industries at 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. May 18th, Red Cross Blood Drive in the Multipurpose Room, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Blizzard Entertainment Field Trip, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Families and School Meeting in the Parent Room, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Senior Awards Night, Multipurpose Room, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Senior Tea Party, Multipurpose Room, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Senior Sunset School Field Trip, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Senior Barbecue, June 4th, 1:00 PM. Graduation, APU Phillips Center, June 5th, 4:30 PM. Gladstone High School. Senior Award Night, APU, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Swim Make-up, Multipurpose Room, May 17th, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. Band Recruitment Events Lawson Center, 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. Sports Physicals for the 2018-2019 School Year, GHS Little Theater, May 18th, 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Marachi de Azusa Concert, GHS Gym, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That is May 18th. Cheer Car Wash, May 19th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Hip-North Groomin Robot Competition, May 22nd, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Cheer and Health Fair, GHS Gym, May 22nd, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Parent Forum, C10, May 23rd, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Choir Spring Concert, May 23rd at 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Band Pop Concert, GHS Gym, May 24th, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. JROTC DJ Ceremony, May 25th, 8:00 AM. Battle of Classes, GHS Gym, May 25th, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Choir, Car Wash Circle Drive, May 26th to 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. JROTC Azusa Memorial Day Ceremony, May 18th, 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Hip Recognition Ceremony, May 29th, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Softball Banquet, Multipurpose Room, May 31st, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Band Banquet, June 1st, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Senior Recognition and BBQ, BBQ Night, GHS Gym, June 1st, 23rd to 10:00 PM. JROTC American Legion Breakfast, 6:30 PM to 12:30 PM. Senior Assembly Checkout, June 5th, GHS Gym, 8:00 AM. Senior Panoramic Pitcher, GHS Gym Outdoor Stage, June 6th at 7:30 AM. Graduation, June 6th at APU Phillips Center, 6:00 PM. Azusa High School Cafe Azteca, May 17th, 8:00 Azusa High School Cafe Azteca, May 17th, 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Cheer Shakey's Pizza Fundraiser, May 17th, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Band Spring Concert, Gym, May 17th to 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Aztec Singers LAMC Choir Festival at Walt Disney Concert Hall, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., May 18th. Hero Fashion Club Annual Fashion Show in the Gym, May 19th to 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Scholarship Night in the Gym, May 21st to 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. School Site Council Meeting in the Main Office, May 22nd, 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. A Lockdown Drill, May 22nd, 8:40 a.m. Sports Awards Gym, May 23rd, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Student of the Month in the Senior Lounge, May 25th, 6:45 to 7:45 a.m. Senior Sunset at the Basketball Courts, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on May 25th. E-Waste Fundraiser, May 26th to May 27th at 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Senior Academic Awards in the Gym, June 4th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Graduation at APU Phillips Center, June 6th at 2:30 p.m. Grad Night at Six Flags Magic Mountain on June 7th, 6:00 p.m. to 6:30 a.m. And Football Passing League Field Trip in San Diego, June 8th to June 10th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Lot going on. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on. We'll start off with Mr. Ortega. Do you have anything for us, sir?
Just wanted to quickly thank the Tulsa team, the elementary Tulsa team, that did our third parent dual immersion at Longfellow Elementary. And for Victoria and Jenny and Leslie for stepping in on that night. We do parent... Well, we bring in all three schools, the current parents, and they had a taste of our curriculum that we do in dual immersion, so just want to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Dr. Rubal Kavan.
Just want to once again congratulate our managers and everyone recognized, but I also want to extend that to all administrators, both classified and certificated, who often go unrecognized, putting in long hours, wearing various hats, spending lots of time away from their families in order to serve our community. It's a very stressful job, but very rewarding in what we see in our students. So, thank you to all of our managers, supervisors, all administrators for everything that you do. Also, want to say thank you to all three bargaining teams, because we did settle on time with all three tables. That's an awesome thing. We look forward, on behalf of the Azusa Unified School District bargaining teams, to continue to build relationships, to continue to work collaboratively in order to best serve our students and community. Together, we can accomplish a lot more. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boarito.
Thank you. So, I do want to put a special thanks to both Darren and Stella, who are a part of my team, and then my third, which is Magna. I'm very, very lucky to have the three of them. They're kind of my dream team. And I think you saw that with the two of them being selected tonight and Stella winning. But also, Magna's a huge part of our team, and we work really well together to make the improvements that you've seen over the last year and you'll continue to see. But I quickly wanted to address a comment, because I saw a lot of heads shaking. So, for that bid on Dalton, we selected the lowest bid. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. It was 56% lower is the one that was selected than the highest bid. I just... I saw a lot of hits. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Kaminski.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to join the others in congratulating all of our award winners tonight. Last week, this is a season of celebration. Last week, we celebrated Day of the Teacher. Tonight, honoring athletes and our scholars and our administrators. Next week, we'll have Week of the Classified Staff. And in just a couple of weeks, we'll have students being honored for scholarships, high school students receiving scholarships, and shortly, we'll be celebrating the graduation of our students. Year-over-year, the performance of our students increases, and their options for continued study, both career and college, continue to grow over the years. And I'm very proud of the staff that make that happen.
Very much. Moving on to 10.0 Report Action of Closed Session Matters. We have none tonight. We're moving on to 11.0 General Functions. 11.1 Adopt Resolution 17-1871 of the Board of Education of the Azusa Unified School District, Accepting Advisory Committee Recommendation Regarding District Real Property. What are the wishes of the board?
We'll make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Jerry Bibles Vogel. We have a second.
And actually, we have a lawyer here, Stephen McLaughlin, who worked with the committee, who can answer questions for you.
Can we have a staff report before we take any motions, please?
Yeah.
So, let me invite Stephen McLaughlin up, first of all, to share his background information with you.
Thank you.
Members of the board.
I just want to piggyback off a couple of comments that were made regarding the process. So, this resolution is to accept the report, which means that we'll accept it for further consideration, meaning that you're not approving of anything that's stated in the report, and you're not taking any action regarding any of the properties in the report. The law requires the district to follow a detailed procedure to declare any property surplus or to sell any property. Part of that process, the preliminary process, is assigning advisory committee, presenting a report, and then you taking that report, reviewing it, considering it, considering everything that's included with that report and all the comments you've heard. So, it's just a part of the process. It's the initial part. Accepting it, again, doesn't mean you're approving anything in there. Any statements that are made, you can ask for further clarification. That's just the preliminary fact gathering part of the process. And so, if you have any other questions about the process legally, I'm more than happy to answer those.
Can you tell us about the scope as how this began, as to how narrow and how wide this was? As in the considerations effort for the committee to consider, to make the recommendations? What was the scope in which they were vetting the whole?
Right. So, the law is very general on that issue. It just basically requires the committee to be formed based on different criteria. So, each member of the committee comes from a different area, so to speak, of the district, bringing background information based on their personal experience. And then, they're required to consider information provided by the district, as well as comments by the public. So, every single committee meeting, we had comments from the public. Those comments are reported in the meeting minutes, which are part of the report. And then, district staff presented as much information as we had regarding the sites. That included enrollment projections, which we provided, information generally about where the schools are cited, where students who are going to those schools currently are living, so where they might have to go if a school is closed. But we made it clear to the committee, and the law makes it clear that they're not privy to all the information that they might need to make an assessment. That's why it's just a recommendation. So, there's a lot of information that you might have, that you might request from district staff, that the committee didn't have. So, legally, their only obligation was to report what they heard from the community, and they did that through eight different meetings. And the meeting minutes that are included in the report reflect some of those comments. So, that's the scope in general. That's the assignment that they were given. And again, it's just one piece that the board can use to make a decision regarding what they're going to do with those sites, if anything.
So, how did they change so quick? How they changed so quick from, you know, having all the schools, and then they went to the middle schools, and then they went back to two schools? I mean, it's like happened like, you know, that all of a sudden, some information came to them? Or, I mean, I went to every meeting, but, you know, again, I didn't see what they were seeing.
Right. And some of that is reported in the meeting minutes, which you'll see in this. Frankly, I've had experience with these kind of committees all over the state, and a lot of that happens. Different information comes. There's different dynamics between the committees. So, some people may bring up points that they didn't necessarily get to articulate in other meetings. So, a lot of times, these things change. It's a very fluid situation. And again, staff and I made it clear to them that this is just a recommendation based on the information they have. And so, a lot of people asked for further information that we couldn't frankly provide them. For example, we would love it if we could get an assessment of how valuable each site is, meaning how much money the district might be able to get if they sold it. But frankly, that would be cost prohibitive. So, we told them that we can't provide them that information. So, they had to consider that based on other factors, locations, what they felt about it in general. So, a lot of times, it's a very fluid situation. And at the end of the day, as we pointed out, you're not going to get a committee that has a unanimous decision. So, you're going to have some people that are going to disagree. Some people are going to try to argue another side and convince other people. So, it's a very dynamic situation. The meeting minutes do reflect that, and the report does state that it wasn't a unanimous decision, and it rarely is.
But if you're saying that they didn't receive all the information that they should have had, do you think it's a fair that they do recommend a recommendation?
Right. Because their job is to recommend based on community input. So, the law says that that's the only information they're required to get, because it's, again, it's only a piece of your decision. In your fact gathering process, you consider the report. You can ask staff to bring in other information that you want. But their job simply is to reflect the input and the information that they're getting from the community, as well as their personal input. So, some of them are staff members.
And that's a big decision, just to go on those factors.
Right. And that's why they don't make the decision. They make a recommendation, saying, "Based on what we heard, this is what we recommend, and then you can ask for more information if you'd like." But that's... The law sets this process up, again, as a preliminary process to gather input from the community. And then, you can gather more input from the community by hearing people make comments. And also, if the board decides to move further on one side or the other, there's other resolutions that we'll have to adopt, and at that time, you'll get more community input as well.
Can you expand on the whole issue about whether all sites were considered initially or how that was selected? I mean, I know that as a board, our directive was to be all-inclusive. Can you clarify that? To include all the sites?
Right. So, the committee received a list of the sites, and I believe the list is in the report. So, it was just some of the elementary school sites and the Sierra site. There wasn't middle schools considered. There's some comments on that, saying that you might want to consider that. But the report only focuses on the sites that the board asked them to review. So, that's what's in the report. And there's some... There's a recommendation based on those sites, and there's considerations, saying you might want to look at other sites, you might want to consider these factors, which the board can down the road. But the committee was only assigned to look at certain sites, and those are the sites listed in the report.
I'd like to comment. I went to the meetings when we were at the district offices, in this little tiny building. And we were looking, all of the members of the committee were looking at what students went to what schools, so you could pull up and see, okay, these students go to Mountain View, and how far up they live, how far out, how far they'll have to walk to... If they close Azteca, if they close Magnolia, if they close Paramount, they went through that process, and I was really kind of impressed by that. So, I really thought that's what I'd like. As we move ahead, I'd like some more of that, just so that we know the general impact for the entire community. But I would just like to comment that that was the information that Mark gave everybody was really good. It was good to see. And then, when everybody showed up, thank you so much, and we moved on to Gladstone, then the input was good.
That's correct, yes. There was a lot of input provided, and that's reflected in the report. And specifically, I want to draw your attention to the meeting minutes, because the report is relatively short, but the meeting minutes go over in detail each meeting. And that's why we provide that to you. And again, this is just for you to consider, to chew on, so to speak, and then you come back if you need more information, if you want to take more actions, then we go down the process.
So, just can you clarify again for me? So, why was there one set of recommendations made, and then at a meeting after that, a different set of recommendations?
So, what the law requires is, once the committee decides on recommendations that they're going to consider, they post those recommendations to the public, and then they hold a public hearing. And then, they get more comments based on that specific recommendation. Then, the committee comes back and says, "Okay, based on all these comments, do we want to change?" And a lot of times, they get new information, new concerns, and then they can change that recommendation based on those comments. So, that's what happened, and that's frankly common. That's what happened. And that's why the law requires us to post those, so we can get specific information. Because at first, we're just saying, "We're considering all these sites. If you're interested, come." But then, once we have a recommendation, we're saying, "This is a recommendation that we're considering presenting to the board. If you have a comment on this specific recommendation, please come and have your voice heard." And that's what happened. And based on those comments and further information, it changes. And that's quite frankly common. And that's what the law is designed to do, to make sure that the recommendation goes through that process.
So, if we decide to go down this pathway, what would be the next steps?
So, the next step would be, if you accept the report, you consider it. If the board decides that they want to pursue selling or leasing any of the sites, we have to present another resolution, basically formally declaring that site surplus, and then instructing staff to proceed with a sale or lease. And once that process starts, there's a whole process that's involved with sending out public notices to certain public agencies, saying, "We're considering selling the site." If certain public agencies say that they're interested, we have to negotiate with them. If we don't reach an agreement with any of those public agencies, then we hold what we call a bid auction, where we make it available to the entire world, and we're required to accept the highest bidder. There's also, not to get too much in the weeds, but in the report, it talks about a waiver that the board can seek, which basically asks the state to waive that process and allow the board to issue what we call a request for proposals, which basically, again, announces that we're considering selling or leasing this property to the world. And then, we welcome anyone to submit a proposal. And in that case, we assess the proposals, and we're not required to award to the highest bidder. We can consider other things, like what the site's going to be used for, how long it's going to be leased, if it's going to be leased, the terms of the sale, things like that. So, it's a long process. And at any point in that process, the board can essentially pull the plug, say, "We pursued this, we considered selling or leasing, but based on community input or based on the responses we're receiving, we're not going to do it." So, again, it's a long, detailed process. This is the first part of it.
So, when do we get to have a discussion about strategically as to what this means for us? And if we make that rather than that decision procedurally, when do we have the substantive discussion about what it means closing a school, what it means to impact the students? And I know that the committee has done a comprehensive job in evaluating that. I was present in those meetings as well. But I am not clear as to when do we have the strategic understanding as to what models are we following? Are we, for example, hypothetically, if we close a elementary school, are we combining the middle school K-8 model? What model are we following to make sure that we have this discussion, so we have a bigger understanding as to what the substance is? And I get the procedural aspects to it, which you're coming back to. I'm not so sure about the... When do we have the discussion about the substance?
Right. So, legally, we're required, the first thing we have to do is accept this report. And then, at that point, we're open to do whatever we want. So, some districts accept the report, and in the next board meeting, declare a site surplus. Other boards have another presentation where we discuss some of those options, where we consider those things. We can do that in closed session, as well as open, just discuss strategically what the board wants to do. So, it's open to you, basically. The law only requires us to accept this report as a part of that process. And then, as much information as you want to gather or request regarding the process and how that's going to work is up to you. So, we can do whatever you need. You can request whatever information you need from staff to bring back to discuss those issues.
So, I mean, I think it's premature to start talking about those issues. I mean, I think we, as a board, haven't even discussed whether or not this is something that we even would be willing to consider pursuing, right? I mean, I think tonight, it's just acceptance of the fact that a committee was put together, and they're delivering a report to us, right?
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I would say that it's premature to start having those kind of discussions, because I'm not sure that it's something that we're even going to contemplate right now. And I think it's really important that we're clear with our communities what is happening, right? So, there's not this uncertainty that I'm hearing from our community and even from our staff, which very much concerns me. Now, Mr. Boarito, I would turn to you and talk about... So, in terms of our budget, right? So, when we put this committee together in February, what were we anticipating our budget deficit to be?
At that point, it was $7.1 million that we were looking at cutting for the 18, 19 school year.
For next year, so the budget we'd approve at the end of June?
Correct.
Right, so at this point right now, where are we with that?
So we're estimating before, being that we haven't approved the raises that are coming for both units, to be zero, and that we would actually have the first year on record of a positive budget without deficit spending for the 18, 19 school year, before the raises.
But, and that did not anticipate a closure of schools, or did anticipate closure of schools? That budget you're talking, you're referring to right now?
It, it does not anticipate a closure of school.
Right, so I think, I mean, from my perspective, I, I really feel like, I think we've gone through the process. I can tell, it was a very painful process, I think, and the uncertainty that it causes with the community. I mean, I, I, especially for the children, I feel like, I, I, I wish we had done a better job communicating with, with the process and what was happening, so that there's not this uncertainty. And, um, but I think that we are where we are right now. The committee has finished its process, they have a report in front of us. Us accepting the report does not mean that we will take any action in the future, and I for one don't feel like I'm interested in pursuing this further. I, I mean, I just want to be upfront about it with the rest of the board members here. So, um, so that's where I am right now.
I totally agree with you. I really feel it depends on our financial and our budgets, and even until June, you know, till we're sure we get our, our final budget for the year, for myself, I cannot make a recommendation one way or another.
So I do have another question about process, right? So, and this is again, just completely hypothetical, but, but if we were to, let's say, move forward and create a surplus property list, so one of the, one of the public speakers recommended that we put all those, all elementary schools on a property list, what would be the impact of doing that?
So the lists, and I think we just need to take a step back. So the list is what's presented by the committee. The board, the only decision that the board will make is whether or not to declare any of these sites surplus. So the board can declare any of the sites listed in this report surplus, or none of them. It's not required to follow anything in this recommendation. The next step would be to announce to the world that we're declaring it surplus, and we're going to explore either selling or leasing it. So the board could declare all sites surplus and then pursue selling or leasing them. That's something that I would not recommend doing. But the only next action that this board has to do is whether or not to declare these sites surplus. So we don't form-
But that's not tonight, right? You're talking, that would not be tonight.
Right, that cannot be tonight, correct. The only thing that the board can do now is accept this report for further consideration.
And then what happens with the report? So I mean, full transparency, so if we approve a report, is there a timeline associated with taking action on the, on the committee's report?
So that's a great question. So the law does not set a timeline on this report. Usually, we recommend that a report can be valid for two to three years, meaning that if a board in two or three years wants to come back and use this report, again, as part of its process, it can. If it goes beyond that, usually we recommend forming another committee, just because times have changed. And if the law's changed within now and the next year or so, then we recommend that you do another report. But this report can stay valid generally up for, through two to three years. And what happens is, you'll pass a resolution just ratifying, accepting this report, saying that you recognize that you approved it a couple of years ago or whenever, and that you honor that, and that you're going to move forward with the certain recommendations. But it can last on the shelf for two to three years, essentially.
What if we don't accept what's being offered to notice as the reported actual item?
So if you don't accept the report, then the board cannot take any other action unless it reconvenes an advisory committee. It can try to reconvene this committee, but the members of this committee are not obligated to do that. So you can take any other action, you'd have to go through this process again, essentially, start from scratch.
I mean, so to that point, I mean, from my perspective, I feel like we've asked, we've asked this committee to form, we, we asked that committee to form, we asked them to meet, we asked them to make recommendations. And I would, I would hate for those committee members to feel like it was an empty, it was an empty process, right? I mean, it was an exercise in futility if, if we don't accept the report. I think, I think that if we are very clear and upfront about what we're doing next, right, I think we can be clear about that tonight. Um, I, I, I mean, I would be okay approving the report tonight.
So, so, but when we adopt the report, essentially, it could be revived sometime in the future?
Well, in the future, what the board could take, if a board could either assign a new advisory committee and say, we're going to throw out this report and get another one, or the board can come back and say, we reviewed this report, and for whatever reason, we don't like it, and we're going to reject it. You can do that as well, and then basically, we'd be back to square one as well. So just accepting it means essentially you're going to review it. You can either A, not do anything, and it can sit on the shelf forever. B, you can for, go forward with a certain action on one of the properties based on it. C, you can reject it, saying after you reviewed it, you didn't like it for whatever reason. Or fourth, you can assign another advisory committee and say, we just want updated information. So those are basically your options, but again, those would happen subsequent to this meeting.
So what happens if we, well, not we, but myself, if we tabled the item, is, because I just received this report right now, and I can't read it like in two minutes, my personal point of view. So if we tabled it, you know, till I read it further, what is, are we going to timeline or, or something?
No, there's no timeline. But again, this resolution makes it clear that you're just accepting it for consideration. So it doesn't necessarily-
I understand, but if I don't read it, how can I accept something I didn't read?
Right, you can table this, and we can come back and consider accepting it in another meeting as well.
Does anybody have any comment before I? So, um, first of all, I'd like to thank the people that served on this committee, and I'll name them. Jason Delatorre, Robert Donaldson, Lou Fields, Jorge Rosales, Veronica Devoe, Linda McNary, Ivan Mudiyo, and Meg Savala. We know that there, this came with, with some challenges. It was, it was not easy to, to sit on this committee and to listen to community members come to, come to the podium and, and speak very passionately about how they feel about their schools. I would too, absolutely. I do understand the process, I understand that this is just a step. Almost, if, if we can, those of us that have been involved in like the LCAP process, where we have a PAC plus, and we have community members, and we have parents and staff, give us a report recommendations on some things that they'd like to see, um, see with, with the LCAP. Ultimately, it does, the, the decision-making belongs to the board. Is, do I feel that closing the school is the best option? I'm with Yolanda. I think that that is always a last resort, absolutely. You know, aside from enrollment and, and all these other things, and I spoke about this earlier, you have memories, you have traditions, you have, it's almost like letting that, 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 that house that you grew up in go. So we understand, I understand that, I get that. So in terms of tabling this item, I, I, I don't want to see our community members or our community have to extend this another two weeks. I, I, I know I'm prepared, based upon what I've heard, based upon what I've read, and based upon what I've seen to proceed. And I understand that, that this is, again, just, just taking the discussions that, that happened during that meeting, and ultimately, a recommendation, just taking that into consideration. But ultimately, it does, the decision-making does belong to us, the board. And is that the best decision to close a school? I, for me, no, it isn't. So that's where I stand, and I hope that's clear with everyone. Um, and that's, that's where I stand. Do we have any further comments?
Yeah, if this, if this is the end of the process, then, which it sounds like for myself it is, because I, I do appreciate for all the committee members coming together. I mean, this was a eye-opening learning experience as well for myself, to just sort of really understand the issues far more closely as to really procedurally put it out there to take the action to close a school. But again, there was a lot of discussions about what it means and the importance of that, and the impact that it's going to result from that. So, um, then I, I'm, I'm not clear as to why would we take an action about something that is, it's consideration, but we're going to consider at what point? I mean, well, if I'm clear that I'm not going to consider it, not that, not that I don't value the work itself that went, went in, um, that's the part I'm not.
Right, and that's a question that comes up all the time, because this law is essentially a little bit unclear, and a lot of people ask why this committee and this advisory committee is required for the process or how it fits in. But the law requires it to be part of the process and part of the fact gathering process, so, um, a lot of districts, as part of their due diligence, just every once in a while, have an advisory committee come back, consider the report, and then put it on the shelf.
So, so wasn't the advisory committee, the 711 committee, the process of the PAC plus committee? The PAC plus committee?
Yes, well, in fall, when we were facing a significant deficit, the board had asked the district to put together a budget committee, which was the PAC plus committee. And that committee reviewed the budget, and that committee made the recommendation to close two schools at the time. That recommendation came to the board, and then the board asked, approved establishment of the surplus property committee. And what Mark was sharing earlier is that the budget situation's changed between fall and currently.
Before, before our students leave, I think they're walking out, I just want to say thank you, ladies, before you leave, for, for, for coming to the podium and for speaking and for being here tonight. Okay, thank you, and please be safe and have a good night tonight. Okay?
So basically, we've already conquered this process. In two years, if our budget changes, and we, if we don't accept it, and we have to go back through it all again, spend extra money, setting up a committee, having a meeting, so on and so forth. Whereas with this, all we need to do, we're just saying thank you for doing this, and then we could just set it aside, not do anything, put it on the shelf. But that way, in two years or something, it changes since we're getting an entirely new governor and Board of Education Director. We need at least have that on the side in case something goes south.
That is correct, yes.
All right. That's all I need, thank you.
So I, I mean, I just want to be clear with Yolanda. So you, did you say that you're not comfortable voting on this tonight? Could you?
I personally am not. I, I haven't read this. I, I just got it put in my desk today, right now, and I have not read it.
I'd be happy to make a motion to table it if there's another member.
I, I, I second that motion.
We have a first and we have a second to table the item. Take a hand vote.
I don't have a problem with table it yet, it's just I can take it directly now, another two weeks, three weeks without it. Um, there's always just more folks who come in and watch and talk. I'm going to vote no.
Oh, Mr. Nacashon?
Yes.
Oh, are we not voting online? So, I mean, and I'll just say that I'm going to vote yes. I mean, I feel like, um, I feel like if, if the report was just, was just put online today and you haven't read it yet, I mean, I think, I don't think it's fair to vote on something if someone's not feeling comfortable having to get complete information. That being said, I mean, I think we do have an opportunity right now, where at the dais, it's on the agenda to be really clear about what we plan to do with this, because before, a school is going to end before the next meeting, right? And so people may not be connected to, you know, they're going to go on vacation, they're going to do other things. So I think it is our opportunity to make it clear what our next steps are. And I, I, I mean, I think I've already made it clear for myself, like, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this process at all.
So I'll second that, I mean, I-
I'm not, I'm not asking for a motion, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
But I'm in the line with that thinking. That's what I, I'm having trouble voting for this resolution, because if that's the end of the process, then the end of the process. I don't understand why we have to accept it, and that's where I am.
I, I, I agree. I would vote no on this resolution at this time.
But wait, the motion is to table it.
So this is, so, so, so what we'll do, this is an opportunity to ask any additional questions. If we have any additional questions, this is the opportunity to do that. We will table it, we will table the item to give Yolanda the opportunity to, to, to go back and, and review the report. The videos and the meetings are online. If you need to go back and review the, the meetings, please do so.
We also have the minutes of all the reports we have, it's online.
Okay, so if you have any additional questions, we have our attorney here right now, so this is an opportunity to do that. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and table the item. We'll table the item for our next-
But wait, and we have to take, we have to take a vote.
I'm not quite sure what we're voting on here.
There was a motion and a second on the table, to table the item to the next regular meeting.
Okay, so let's take a hand vote, please. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for myself, so five yeses. So we will table the item to the next board meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for this item. Okay, now moving on to 11.2. This is an information item, first reading, amended board policy VP 5030, eliminated administrative regulation AR 5030, and eliminated exhibit E 5030, student wellness. Do we have any questions or discussion regarding this item?
Can you give us a background as to how we're changing the, the language from May to Shell? I mean, what was that, what trend did that?
Absolutely, and we have a little presentation for you tonight to walk through this, this board policy. So, good evening, President Jaramillo, board members, Dr. Kaminsky, cabinet, and audience members. We are very excited to bring to you the first reading of our student wellness board policy 5030. Here tonight, we do have several of our members of our wellness committee who are going to come up and help present tonight. So I'd just like to introduce them really quickly. Number one, we have Holly Rodriguez, teacher at, from Powell Elementary School. We have our district manager of the year, Stella, Director of Nutrition Services. Where's Stella, go?
Oh, just by Gary.
Hi, Stella. And we have Marianne Inespedes from Healthy Azusa. We do have other members of the wellness committee in the audience, but these three are going to help present tonight. So first and foremost, we'd like to begin by sharing the initial vision for this beginning stages of this work around student wellness. Please note that this vision is, is only for the initial stages. So the vision that we had was year one, which is this year, 1718. We wanted to dig into a new student wellness policy, and that is what we are presenting tonight, the fruit of, of that, of that labor. In year two, the task of the committee is to, if accepted and, and approved by the board, is to then start digging into the policy and bringing that policy to life for our, for our staffs and for our community and for our students. And that includes processes, procedures, literature, training, marketing, everything that goes around student wellness. At this point in time, I'd like to call, call up Maria Inespedes, who's going to start us off with the process that we took to get to the point that we're at today.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here today. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about the process that was taken to put the committee together. An email was sent out to everybody, to all the staff, in addition to external partners to invite them if they were interested in, in becoming part of the wellness committee. Out of that email, we had spawned a total of eight teachers, administrators, and staff members responded, and six external partners, including Healthy Azusa, which I am representing, and also parents, Think Together, Neighborhood Homework House, Chamber of Commerce, Citrus, and Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The committee met several times, and after getting to understand what the work that was laid out for us was over the next several years, we began working on the draft of the student wellness policy. Using different protocols, the team landed on a draft that was embraced by the entire team. The first draft of the policy that was drafted by the wellness committee then went on a feedback journey, making stops at several different meetings to include different stakeholders and find out what their reaction was to the work that we had done. At each of these stops, stakeholders went through the protocol to offer feedback, ask questions, and gain clarity. The feedback from all of the groups was then compiled and taken back to the wellness committee members. Together, the members analyzed the data and took time to decide what action to take, namely, do we alter the policy or do we keep it as is? Altogether, there were 12 recommendations that the committee had to contemplate. After working through each one, the committee adj, the committee agreed and revised the policy based on 11 of the 12 recommendations. The only recommendation the committee did not agree with ultimately, and ultimately left in the policy is on page four. The recommendation was the word require be changed back to encourage, but the committee felt strongly that this had to be a requirement, and so it left it as require. So today, we bring back to you the wellness committee's recommendations for your consideration as a first read, but we would like to highlight some of the key ideas for you.
So the committee felt that social emotional well-being was included throughout and felt that wellness had to- that wellness had to have a broader scope. The wellness committee is now formed and committed to the work that we have ahead of us to make this policy come to life. A move away from optional items to more mandatory items, ensuring equity in our district, and avoiding non-nutritious foods during the school day. This was mentioned previously as the only area we did not adopt best on the data, allowing food-related celebrations initiated by families.
So before we open up to questions, I, I do want to express thanks to the committee. It was a really well-rounded committee. They were really committed to come to the, to the meetings and voice their opinions. As you have heard, one of the recommendations from the stakeholders was not adopted by the committee, and they, they, they feel strongly that we should use the word require. So at this point in time, I'm going to open up to, to questions and, and have the whole entire committee, we do have other members here, Gary's here, Jennifer's here, to help answer any questions that you might have.
All right, well, I'll just jump in. I want to thank all of you, especially when I thank our manager of the year Stella, because I know you've been, you've been a leading guiding force behind this and making sure that this happens. Yes, Arturo too, but I know that, I know this is a passion of yours that I share, so I really appreciate the work that you guys have put into this. And I'm going to just say right off the top, I really appreciate that you removed all the believes into requires and all the mays to the shalls, right? Because I think if we're going to have a wellness policy, it should be a wellness policy, it should be aligned with best practices, and it should have teeth. So I really appreciate that you guys have taken the bold step of putting that in this language, and, and I just wanted to affirm that and say thank you very much. I did just want to ask a couple of questions about some parts that I think may be considered controversial, right? So just want to, so we can talk about them and see, see where people are. So, they're not numbered, but I think it's on page four. Is that page four? So talking about, so the first one, you already briefly touched it, and that is not having food-related celebrations initiated by family, right? So can you talk a little bit about, about why, why it's, I mean, why we shouldn't be doing that, maybe I think is, would be the question?
Sure, I'll, I'll start and then I'll offer it up to, to any member that wants to come up. This was definitely a point of conversation in the committee, a very healthy conversation about non-food celebrations in the, in the classrooms. A lot of people brought their own personal experiences about what's happening in other districts, like for instance, where my kids go. We're not allowed to take any food. We can take books, we can take, you know, other stuff like that. And so just kind of, everybody kind of, you know, brought in their, their own, their own stories and just really had a, a strong conversation about that. And the committee completely understands that there will be, there's a lot of work ahead of us, and a lot of it, like, like you mentioned, Ms. Shinonin, some controversial or some, some pushback that's going to come, not only from staff but from community, but I think the, the committee is, is, is well-committed and, and ready to, to take that on.
I think what's important, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Let me see, if anybody wants to expand on that?
Right, right, well, and then, I mean, I, I had along that lines, I had a question about the, just pointing out the part about not using food as a reward, right? So can you talk a little bit about that part?
Yes. I'm looking at, we're looking at Holly because she was our, she was our spokesperson in that area.
Okay. So, just to be as brief as possible, I had a professor in college who said, make sure you don't ever use food as a reward. It was one of those things that in college, there are all the things that are addressed, and that one stuck with me because it was so unique. I didn't grow up in a household where food was ever used as a reward or a consequence, so it was kind of a weird thing at age twenty-one to be addressed, but it stuck with me. And over the years, it's just become more and more strong, when, when you recognize the history, when you recognize that we're, you know, one of the first world nations, and yet our health has declined in the last ten years to be like seventeenth out of eighteenth. I mean, that's terrible. So, you know, we're overfed and undernourished, the quality of our food that we're ingesting is not helping. So, just taking that mindset of not wanting, we're, we're here to help our students, our whole job is to serve our students, never to harm them. And there's tons of research that shows that introducing the concept that you have to earn food or that it will be withheld is damaging to the brain, leads to food disorders, leads to using of food in, in later adulthood. The illustration that was given to me by this college professor was, you never use anything that is for life. Those are non-negotiables. So, you would never say to a child, you know, you behaved well, so you can sleep inside tonight. We all know that's abuse. You would never say, you misbehaved, so I'm going to cover your mouth and nose, you can't breathe for three minutes. So, it's just that concept that if we don't withhold water, food, basic necessities, it's just, we, in our society, we haven't classified it as abuse, but it really is and we need to address it. The next illustration that I shared with my committee members was, at my husband's job, there's a Take Your Child to Work Day that we had, we attended a few years ago. And he works for a city, so we got to go to see the drug sniffing dog, which was fascinating for the kids. And when the police officer was sharing how they train the dog, he asked, how do you guys, kids, think that we train the dogs? And of course, kids said, oh, with treats. And the, and the police officer said, oh no, we would never do that, we would never harm the animals, that would be very, very destructive. So it really, like, it was already something that was with me for fifteen years, but in the last five years, it was just, we're treating our children worse than dogs, like, that's terrible to me, that's my own personal opinion. So, that's my, that's my stake in it. I, I, I am one, I was only one vote. If they didn't vote with me, I said, that's fine, I'm just here to state what is important to me. So, those are my thoughts on the subject, that we should treat our Azusa students better than dogs.
Yeah.
I may say also that I, I know it has to do with healthy and not rewarding them, but also, I feel the most important is allergies. You know, someone brings cupcakes, which I didn't hear, but cupcakes with peanuts in there, and someone gets sick or, you know, I worked in a school in the health office and we had kids that, you know, their throat were closed or they need every pins and all this kind of stuff. But it goes far beyond than being healthy, it has to do with someone's life also, possibly, right? So, I just wanted to point that out, that I know it all has to do with that too.
So, in addressing the piece on, on the Parks and Rec and Family Services, I know that being under Parks and Family Services Commission, that these discussions are also happening in that respect, so how, how was the communication of the collaboration piece part of this whole program, how is that going to fit in to make sure that some of the stakeholders are participating in, especially in the family services component?
Sure. So one of the things we are very excited is Parks and Rec does sit on the committee. Unfortunately, they cannot be here tonight, but they, we, we do have a seat, they do have a seat on the committee. I, I don't recall off the top of my head the page number, but one of the things that was recommended by the committee was around partnerships, and we actually expanded it beyond what the CSBA recommendation was. Again, I apologize that I, I don't have it right in front of me, but there is a piece in the, in the board policy that was influenced by Parks and Rec and by Citrus, saying that we, we need to be more aggressive, page two, thank you, we need to be more aggressive in regards to our, our partnerships with our, with our local stakeholders.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that discussion is just beginning, and I hope that there's going to be a lot of opportunity, I think, in the future with a new director on board who has championing a lot of these efforts to create an atmosphere where a lot of the entities and partnerships is happening. So there, there's, there's going to be those discussions, the community input in a charrette setting, so it's my understanding that that's coming, so-
Absolutely.
Hopefully that the community and the board members could participate in that as well, to really shape a, a future that is much more cohesive.
I do have one, one final question, and that's-
Yes.
On the next page, page five, going back to the, to getting the controversial piece. So, just procedurally, like, how would you anticipate an entity having to get board approval to, how would that process work, right?
For selling?
For selling. Any entity selling food to students on campus during the school day will require board approval, and nutritional information for items sold will be maintained on file for three years.
Yeah.
So, so does that, that's coming to us for approval? So it wouldn't go through, so it wouldn't just go through nutrition services?
That is correct. So the, the idea, Stella, if you want to come up a little bit, but the idea is that, and again, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us, and we're, we're embracing that and we're, and we're ready for that. But the idea is that for any kind of foods that are being sold during school day, whether that's a vending machine, or whether that's an event, has to be board-approved prior to, to that sale. And if we're bringing it for board approval, it's that we've already checked, checked it out for nutritional value.
Just to add on to what Mr. Ottega has said, that's actually a requirement by USDA and CDE.
Oh, it is, okay. Oh, that's actually required? So it wasn't-
Mm-hmm. Every item sold in school has to be approved by the board, and the nutritional value has to be calculated, and the information has to be kept on file by the school site and by our office for three years.
Okay, so how do we plan to, I mean, I don't need an answer tonight, but I, I think we really, I'm really interested in knowing how we're going to be implementing this, especially when, I know when we know that there really hasn't been a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, there are people that are selling things and probably not nutritionally, with nutritional value on campuses, right, especially at the secondary level. And so thinking about how are we going to implement this so that, so that we really are eliminating those unhealthy foods?
There, the schools are allowed four sales a year. So, they mostly have been selling more than four times a year, but they are only allowed four sales a year. So, if you're allowed four sales a year, you can plan it on your calendar and then bring it to the board for approval before the sale happens. They can't have more than four sales.
So, but I'm talking about, like, you know, you might have a teacher that has, I mean, I think people in the audience know what I'm talking about, right? Somebody may have some stuff that they bought at Costco and are just selling to make a little money for the club, right? So, so how does, how's that going to work?
You're, you're absolutely correct, and that, that is stuff that, that we, again, right now, know. Again, I just want to reiterate, we, we know we have a, a lot of work ahead of us. I mean, if we break this board policy apart, there's a, a lot of things that we need to do. But we're going to approach it with a, a mindset of support, a mindset of transparency, a mindset of marketing, so that we can be successful. We know that there's going to have to be accountability and follow-through and monitoring, and we're, and we're ready to take that on, and we're excited to, to take you every step of the way as we, as we bring this, this policy to life.
And then with the elimination of the, the administrative regulations and the exhibit, I mean, would that, would there be something coming in the future, or we'll just have a board policy in the future?
We'll just have a board policy in the future.
And just not have a board policy, okay.
Looks good.
Thank you, Arturo.
Go ahead, Yolanda, sorry.
And your staff. I just said thank, thank them for-
I make a motion to, do we have a motion on authority?
No.
I make a motion to approve?
It's informational.
Oh, it's already in? Oh, it's informational. I want to adopt it tonight.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I'll just, just, just real quick, save my comments for last. So I think that it's really, it's really great to see that we are emphasizing social and emotional wellness when it comes to food. It's, I think us as adults, we, and this is just from personal experience, I'm, I'm actually a personal trainer now, and so it's really difficult to, to have clients walk in and, and, you know, later on in life, they're struggling with, they're still, they're still trying to develop a, a relationship with food. And, 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 and some people walk in and they're counting calories and they're, and they're, and they're, they're counting macros and they're, and they're trying to, they're, they're living off of numbers, and that's so unhealthy, I think, as well too, because you're not going to live the rest of your life confined to numbers as well. But I think as adults, we, when we see kids, they're very impressionable. And so I think that we, if we as adults, we set that example for them, I, I think that that goes a lot further than, than this, than this board policy. I think as individuals, as we're walking around on the street, when we go to the store, when we're putting food together, when we're doing things, that's what matters. So we as adults have a big responsibility when it, when it comes to this. So, happy to see this happening. It's a long time coming, and so that's all I have to say about that. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to, where are we at? Eleven point three, draft of modifications to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen ALCAP. Certainly, you're back on, hi.
Back on, hi, long time no see.
Long time no see.
So, before we jump into this particular spreadsheet that, that you all have, I just want to take the opportunity to kind of outline a, a couple of things. Number one, last year when we adopted the ALCAP, and we adopted it for three years, it was the first time in the short life of, of the ALCAP where we actually were approving a three-year ALCAP that was going to run its course for three years. In previous years, we would, we would adopt a three-year ALCAP, then the following year, another three-year ALCAP, then the following year, another three-year ALCAP. This time around, we approved a three-year ALCAP, and that ALCAP will, will be the three-year ALCAP for the course of the three years. So when we approve an ALCAP this year, you're actually only going to be approving the ALCAP because there are components of the ALCAP that need to change every, every year. For example, the annual update that we have to, that we owe to our community and our stakeholders. But there will only be two years on that ALCAP that we approve. Then the following year, we'll approve it again, because again, there are components that we have to update every single year, and then you'll only be approving one year of the ALCAP, and then the following year, we bring three years. So I just want to kind of put that out there. In June, we'll be bringing the full entire ALCAP. But this is the process that, that we, we initially take to ensure that we are positioned in the best manner that, that we can. So, as in previous years, with the work with our ALCAP leads, with Cabinet, Business Services, Jennifer, and myself, we go through the ALCAP to try to make it the, the most precise document that we, we could with the most information that we have at that point in time. I do want to, do want to say that with the addition of, of Jennifer, I feel that this budget this year is, is probably the closest that we've ever been. We're probably not a hundred percent, but it's probably the closest that we've ever been in regards to our projections. And so I just wanted to thank Jennifer and Business Services for the work that they've done with that. So, I want to, I want to kind of walk through the color schematics of what you're seeing here and what it means. So first and foremost, you're going to see white, gray, white, gray, white, gray. That's just to keep organizationally, you're on the same, you're on the same act of service. So the gray and the white really don't mean anything, it's just organization. When you see yellow, yellow is categorical or base funding. So, for the, for, for the purposes of the ALCAP, that's not something that we are discussing or super worried about tonight, so-
So categorical is federal funding?
That is correct. So federal funding or base funding is yellow. Anything that you see orange or gold, that is a change in the ALCAP from the ALCAP that you, that you adopted last year. So that would be this first budget column here, with a more accurate number for next school year. So anything in gold is a change that has to do with salary, benefits, salary or benefits or hourly, those kinds of things. So those are in yellow, so this doesn't really constitute a change, it's just we've updated to reflect more accurately what the real budget is for that particular position or those particular teachers, or that particular course, or whatever that may be.
So if it indicates ten, ten music teachers that's remaining, that's just amount is changing, you're saying?
Thank you, yes. So if you look at this, last year we said it would be seven hundred eighty thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, but after doing our homework, again, Jennifer digging into the weeds, identifying who these ten music teachers are, and then working with Business Services, the actual amount, the more accurate amount is seven hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. So that is correct. It's not we're changing something there, we just updated the correct numbers. Okay? Anything in green is a change in, in budget for, you know, particular, for particular items.
So what you're saying, you're reallocating, what's the, from the actual reflection from seven thirty-one to seven eighty, the difference, you're reallocating that? seven thirty-one to seven-eighty, the difference, you're reallocating that?
That is correct. It would, it would go somewhere else, and I'll explain a little bit about that as we, as we move forward. I want to tell you that of the entire OutCap, and I'm going to use the word change, and Jennifer doesn't like that word, because already working with LACO, this doesn't really constitute a change, so they're not looking at it as a change. But I do want to point out two things that I would consider a change, okay? So the first one is if we go to page one, two, three, four, five, six...
You're going to have to give us something on top, because there's not numbers.
Sure. All right. So here on this column right here, the first column, it's six point four.
Oh, there are those numbers, okay.
So the first one I want to point out is in area six point four. You'll see Gary's name there, he's the lead there. Yes?
It says four point four.
No, six point four.
Six point four.
The first number's changed, the second number stays.
So, here, this is around, you'll notice that in green, there's a PBIS, Restorative Justice slash Safety High School TOSA. TOSA standing for Teacher on Special Assignment. This school year will be the end of our quote-unquote LACO training around PBIS. We have had, we have been having lots of conversation about kind of passing that baton from LACO. We use the word Azusa-FI. It's time that we start building our own capacity now that we've been trained, and start really digging into the context of Azusa. So some of the conversation has been around creating a PLC, or a task force, or a committee that would, that would constitute different representatives and stakeholders from different school sites that would come together for multi-purposes, from sharing best practices to sharing struggles, concerns. This is not working. How is it working at your site? And that this would be something that would get us to a more unified manner, number one. Number two, start really contextualizing PBIS in the terms of Azusa Unified School District. And number three, really digging in and making sure that, that the, that the program is serving the needs that it needs. This PBIS, Restorative Justice, kind of Safety High School TOSA, although would, although would be part of that team, is not necessarily the lead of that team. This is a person yet to be identified and yet to be even decided upon, that would serve the high schools, Azusa Glasswell and Sierra, with the PBIS, Restorative Justice, kind of Safety, and kind of be a liaison, and, and working with the high schools, working with the PBIS, and district team that's yet to be constituted, but that this would be a go-to person. We sat down with the high school principals already, and kind of just started having initial conversations about, you know, what that is and what that might look like, and has been received positively by the, by the three high school principals as something that could have a major impact in pushing forward not only PBIS, but Restorative Justice Practices at their school sites. So, so that is one thing that even though LACO would not consider that a change, I do want to point out to you, because obviously you see zero there, that's not something that's used to live in the, in the OutCap previously.
So Arturo, is this, is this the time now to ask questions about that, or later?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, a couple questions. So you're, is this anticipating one person that will travel between all three schools?
That is, right now, yes, it is anticipating one person.
And why are we focusing on high school as opposed to middle school? And the reason I ask is because you look at our suspension expulsion data over time, right, and you see, you see that, you see, you've seen dramatic drops at the high school level, where you, where we haven't seen that necessarily at the middle school level, right? And so that's why I'm asking this question.
Sure. I think part of it was volume, the sheer volume and capacity of the high schools in regards to assistance and just having another thought partner. The high schools do have PBIS teams at their sites.
And the middle schools don't?
The middle schools do as well. Middle schools do as well. But again, we're just kind of thinking there's just sheer volume. That's kind of the initial thought behind that.
And then what's the thought behind having one person travel between three schools? So most of the, most of the best practice models I've seen have either, either a full-time person at the school where you're going to do Restorative Justice, Restorative Justice Circles, or if they don't have that, like I've seen examples of where they have a teacher who will do a couple sections of their, their main, whatever they're credentialed in, and then do a couple sections of Restorative Justice work, or PBIS work. So, I mean, why are we, why are you making the recommendation to do this, this other model?
I mean, it's, it's better to have a vested as opposed to someone that's facilitating from site to site as opposed to actually going to stand your site.
I, I do not think, I could be wrong, but I don't think that the high schools would disagree if we were to say, look, this is, this is quote-unquote a person, right, right now on paper, which technically translates to five sections, and if we divvied up those sections, let's just say two, two, one, just for right now, just for sake of, you know, just to say it, I think the, I think that that would be something embraced, because then it would be a consistent person, it's somebody at my site, on my staff, who knows my site and my staff, so I don't, I don't see any reason why they might not like that model better. And, and the budget would mirror closely to this.
And then, could you, by our, either in writing or at the next meeting, which is actually going to be our budget hearing, right?
The twelfth?
Of June. Could you bring us information about if we went that route, but also wanted to do it in the high school and the middle school? Like what would those, what would that cost be, right? And maybe think about some recommendations if we did that, where, where else we would have to cut in the OutCap to be able to do that?
Okay. The next section, that, that again, LACO would not consider a change, but I do want to point it out to is the next page under two point five. You'll notice that Stella is the lead there, it's the last page. You will notice that there is a Classified for Nutrition Enhancement that was at zero, because that did not exist in previous, in previous OutCaps, and now there's a $30,000 line item there. That is to support all of the wonderful new nutrition enhancements that we have been promoting and implementing here at our district. Dr. Kaminsky mentioned some of those when she was introducing Stella. So supper, Harvest of the Month, Second Chance Breakfast, those kinds of things that we've been implementing require additional hours, additional staff to be able to do. So this, this $30,000 would be to support those additional nutrition enhancement programs that we have been offering our students. So, so really, from where I'm standing, those are really the only two new changes in the OutCap. Everything else is about readjusting and, and kind of getting better at some clarity. But I do want to end with this before I open it, and I'm willing to do whatever, and explain however you want this, but I do want to also point out, again, just in transparency's sake, when we approved the OutCap last year for this, for this up and coming year, the budget was $19,689,635. Since this year's budget and since adjustments, our OutCap has grown almost a million dollars for this up and coming school year, right? So you would say, dang, a million dollars more, and we only have one TOSA and one $30,000 nutrition, right? Where's all the other money? Like where did that go? So, a humongous bulk of that, about 75% of that, went to the orange. So when we actually sat down and started looking at salaries and benefits, knowing about the increases in, 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 in our benefit packages, and in our benefits that we, we pay for our employees, that's where the bulk of it is. So some of it went down, but a lot of it went up. And so, on the one hand, that's awesome that we had that increase, but on the other hand, as we started getting better at these numbers, these reflect truer numbers, and again, about 75% of that million dollars was taken up right there.
Can I, can I make one more request for...
Yes, absolutely.
So we're spending, we have a significant amount of money allocated to technology, both under technology, but then also under instructional piece?
Yep.
So can we get a report by, before the next meeting, that outlines what we spent that money on this year, please?
Oh, this year?
This year, right?
Okay, yeah.
Well, and if you have, I mean, if you already anticipate what you're going to spend the money on next year, yeah, please share that with me, but I at least want to know what, what, what we spent that money on this year.
Sure. If you'd like. I mean, I can put it right, but I can give you a big picture of this, of this money for next year.
Please go ahead, but then I still want to see it in writing, for this year's expenditures.
So, you do see technology in several areas, namely three areas. Two of those areas sit with Dana, and one area sits with Marvin. The, the money that sits with Dana, that is to continue to support our new adoptions and Chrome Cards for our teachers that are adopting, adopting new programs, and to also go backward. We started that with English Language Arts teachers, and the response, number one, the usage, number two, and the impact, number three, has been amazing. We get to be in classrooms all the time, and to hear language arts teachers at the secondary level, and see with our very own eyes the way those Chrome Cards are being used, has been awesome. But we missed math, and we didn't do that one for our mathematics, so we're thinking about going backwards for math, going forward for history, social science.
So going backwards means what?
Re-instituting Chrome Cards for our math teachers for their adoption.
So for next year?
Yep.
We, that, that money would be used to get the Chrome Cards for all the math teachers?
Yep, and to possibly start doing, starting with elementary, starting with the top grades, and going down depending on the funding. So fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, so forth and so on. And then I'm moving forward our history, social science.
So where are we in terms of thinking about, I think this is really great, I'm really excited about this, and I think it's overdue. In terms of like, of thinking about moving towards one-to-one, where kids can actually take a device home as opposed to just having it in the classroom, so where are we in that thinking?
So here, here's where we are in that thinking. Our History Social Studies adoption has one program on the, a state-approved list that is 100% pure digital. There is zero print. So you can even buy a textbook if you wanted to buy a textbook, it just doesn't come that way. Next Tuesday?
And that's the one that, but you're looking at all the different options, right?
We're looking at all the different options, but next Tuesday, we're convening the History Social Studies Committee to have a conversation about that program. If that program makes it to the list based on this committee, and if that were to be a recommendation, then at that point in time, whether we like it or not, we would have to move to one-to-one.
Okay, but so, but that's, so, but even if that doesn't happen, right? I mean, I think, I would like to see a plan towards getting towards that, I mean, I think, and then, I mean, there's much more to that, right? How to, making sure that kids have internet access at home, right? All these other pieces that would go with that. So I think what I, I think I'm really happy with the Chrome Cards. I'm not going to, I'm really excited, and I'm actually really excited that, that in Ed Services, you guys carved out the money to make it happen this year. I know, so I really appreciate, I want to acknowledge that. But I just want us to be able to plan forward so that we can, you know, go forward as fast as we can.
Sure. So that was Dana's money, sorry, in regards to Marvin's money. Some of the big-ticket items, right now, we have moved to a one-gig connection to the outside world. Part of this money would to, would be to work towards getting us to a 10-gig connection, number one. Number two, to support sites and technology apart from Chrome Cards. So computer labs, teacher laptops, projectors, those kinds of ancillary technology pieces, that's to help, to help support sites with that. And then number three, to start thinking about and implementing voice-over-IP telephone system. So those are the three major components of the money that sits with Marvin.
Is that across the board, all sites, or which sites?
No, that would just, that would just barely start the process of, of that. So 10 gig, individual site, technology support, not Chrome Cards, because that's in Dana's section, and they're already getting that support, and then possibly moving to VoIP.
So then where does E-rate, if we're going to do VoIP, like where does E-rate fit in with that? Because it's, I mean, can we use E-rate, the federal money, to, to pay for that piece?
So, it's been four years since I've been in MIS, but Marvin, if you're back there, what I understand from E-rate is the service is E-ratable, but all the hardware is not. So the way that typically you, you think about that is we be, what's behind the walls is what's, what you can, you can do for E-rate. What's outside the walls this way, you cannot, you cannot apply for E-rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments, questions? Chair? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now moving on to eleven point four, award of bid sixteen dash one zero five five, Underground Utility Replacement at Elton Elementary School. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve, eleven point four.
Second. Do we have a first by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana, and a second by Paul Nacashian? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please place your votes. Do we all vote?
I don't have it.
Take a hand vote.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to eleven point five, award of bid sixteen dash zero four zero, new roofing, HVAC, and fire alarm at Charles Lee Elementary School. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm, go ahead.
First by Jerry Bibles Vogel.
I'll second.
Second by Sheila Ninkus Gonzalez. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, please place your votes.
I think it's not coming.
Join me, maybe? There it is, okay. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to eleven point six, award of bid sixteen dash one zero six three, kitchen upgrade, phase one and two at Slosson Middle School. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve, eleven point six.
I have a first by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana.
Second.
We have a second by Jerry's, Jerry Bibles Vogel, sorry.
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so just, please clarify for me what, what this is.
This is the work that was presented at one of our prior meetings when we looked at a schematic drawing for Slosson, and we had identified three color-coded sections. The first two are included in this, which is the walk-in refrigerator, the walk-in freezer, as well as basic changes in layout and structure and organization for serving, serving lines and access to, to meal-serving areas. The third phase would be, eventually would be redoing some of the workstations for the personnel.
So to, to Paul's, previous, previous plan in a previous meeting, so this, so, I mean, are these plans designed such that when we, when we look, such that we can build on it, right, to have the modern kitchen that we really want to have in the future?
Yeah. Exactly, and they were designed, starting with what was absolutely necessary first, which is the walk-in freezer and refrigerator area, the storage areas for food, and then taking advantage of the opportunity to improve the, the access to meal-serving for the students so that we could quickly serve them and use newer serving equipment for that, and then getting to some of the, the other things that needed to be done.
So this is not dealing with the food prep area, it's just the serving area, mostly?
The serving area and the, and food storage areas. This is, this, if you recall the plan, I think it was kind of a yellow area and a blue area, and then the brownish here is, is phase three. and then the brownish here is phase three.
So, the design is in mind essentially, then in the future?
Stella, still here? Stella, do you want to comment on that? Do you have anything else to add? Or is that?
It's very exciting. I think the act, it's that it really were, they did a good job at planning, and getting people back from the country, and it's like this, but that's not what was given. So, it's a project that the team is really looking forward to, and then they could bring it up, or we got lots of services, lots of advice, and advice, and so, it would be helpful for them to have an additional refrigeration and breakfast.
So, anything in the future is an additional improvement, correct? If we had any plans in the future, that would be in addition on top of what we're doing with this one, okay? Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? We have a first and we have a second. Please place your votes. Motion passes five-zero. Congratulations. Long time coming. Moving on to eleven point seven, award of bid two one six dash zero four two, entrance improvements at Azusa High School, and entrance improvements at Center Middle School. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
First by Paul Nacashian, and a second by Sheila Ning Cruz Gonzalez. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, please place your votes. Motion passes five-zero. Moving on to twelve point zero, consent calendar. Twelve point one, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the format following the last consent calendar agenda item. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board staff or the public request specific items to be discussed. If discussion is requested by a board member, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. The superintendent and staff recommend approval of all consent calendar agenda items. Do we have any items that wish to be pulled tonight?
Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a first by Sheila Ning Cruz Gonzalez, and a second by Paul Nacashian. Please place your votes. Motion passes five-zero. We're now moving on to fourteen point zero, curriculum and instruction, fourteen point one, this is an information item, first reading, amended administrative regulation AR six-one four six point two, certificate of proficiency high school equivalency. Do we have any discussion, changes, questions?
I think the Chesapeake is awesome. I'm glad that, my stepson used it when he graduated from high school because he didn't have enough credit. And just the idea that, you know, letting everybody know that if your student's bored, we can send him over to Citrus after they pass the Chesapeake, or go to a four-year university, I, I...
So, why are these, why are these changes coming to us? Is it change in laws?
I'll invite Gary to come up and address this, please.
What do you mean?
Changes in law, yes, mainly that the high schools have to advertise it better than they did in the past, that there has to be a flyer that goes out. Previously, students became aware of the Chesapeake, maybe their counselors knew about it, maybe they didn't, but they would come to my office at the district office, and they would, I would tell them about where it was, how to prepare for it. Typically, they would go to someplace in Covina, a testing center, they would need to stay enrolled in school somewhere before they went and took the Chesapeake. But the changes you see, as I said, are largely that the high school administrators have to tell the students about the Chesapeake. And it's also a cleaner process of the state telling us if someone passed the Chesapeake, because previously we didn't know, and so those students just counted as dropouts.
So, when did they have to tell them? At what stage, I mean, at the beginning, towards the end, when is that the communication is occurring?
That'll be going out in the fall, that is when students come to school in the fall, that they'll be getting the flyers out. And students have to be sixteen years old or older, and they have to have completed two years of high school before they're allowed to take the Chesapeake.
And I know I had to go online, research it, check things out, we had to set it all up ourselves, the whole nine yards, bring the results to the school that my stepson was at, so, you know, that's, I appreciated streamlining, because there are some parents who really could benefit from it.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Creo. Moving on to fifteen point zero, human resources. Fifteen point one, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, certified student attendance calendar. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
First by Sheila Ning Cruz Gonzalez, and a second by Paul Nacashian. Do we have any questions?
School starts April six, I mean, August sixteenth, right?
Wow, August sixteenth, day one. Please place your votes. There it is, motion passes five-zero. Moving on to business and finance, we are on sixteen point one, approve agreement with Carisillas. Do we have any, do we have a motion? We have a first by Jerry Bibles Vogel.
I'll second.
Second by Sheila Ning Cruz Gonzalez. Any discussion? Seeing none, please place your votes. Motion passes five-zero. We're on sixteen point two, this is a first reading, an information item, amended board policy BP, three-one-one-zero, transfer of funds. Do we have any discussion, changes? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to sixteen point three, this is also a first reading, amended board policy BP, administrative regulation AR three-two-six-zero, fees and charges. Do we have any questions, discussions, changes? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to sixteen point four, this is also a first reading, amended board policy BP, administrative regulation AR three-two-seven-zero, sale and disposal of books, equipment, and supplies. Do we have any questions? Seeing none. Moving on to sixteen point five, approve agreement with Robertson Railroad for Mountain View Train Rental. What are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve sixteen point five.
We have a first by Yolanda Rodriguez-Espana.
I'll second.
We have a second by Sheila Ning Cruz Gonzalez. Do we have any questions, discussion?
Yes, we want the train.
This is going to be an excellent way of ending tonight's meeting and journey, and please place your votes. Motion passes five-zero, it is ten sixteen. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, we are now adjourned, please drive safe.